That was the same.
There's any difference.
It is, and it's all pretty much.
Hi Darla.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, we can.
So scary.
It's scary.
Alright.
Oh Dale got something.
Just testing Fran, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear us? Thank you. Yes, I can. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, it's five o'clock. All the order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Campbell.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for our city leaders. Lord, we ask that you would guide them or that they would make decisions that would bring justice and equity to all people. But we thank you for how you have protected our community and we ask that you continue to do so in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna start with the public hearing. Port Rans City Council will conduct a public hearing on the following. FPLT twenty-two zero zero one four five zero final plat of Palmyra Beach, PUD unit seven. Being thirty-seven point five seven acres out of land out of the Edward Hall survey abstract number one sixty. Certificate number two twenty-seven and being a portion of one hundred and forty-three point one zero nine acre tract of land described as tract two. And a special warranty deed from HCB Beach Texas LLC to KM Beach LLC. Recorded in document number two zero one three zero zero seven seven nine eight. Official public records of Nueces County, Texas. Applicant is KM Beach LLC property location thirty-eight hundred highway three sixty-one Palmyra PUD. Anyone here? Speak on the public hearing? Comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item four. Citizen comments and reports. Fran, are there any citizen comments? I didn't get any up here on my desk. Okay. Anybody wishing to? Speak from the audience? Okay, having none, move on to number five. Is consent agenda? Only item in the consent agenda is A ordinance, the third final reading approving zoning change request ZCR twenty-two zero zero one zero five seven changing property located at fifty-six hundred State Highway three sixty-one zone from Newport plot plan unit development. NPUD zone to commercial to CZ as requested by Nueces County Water Control Improvement District number four. Providing for the validity of said ordinance repealing all prior ordinances in conflict here within and providing for an effective date. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda. My second.
Alright, any discussion? Fran call the roll.
Countess Mertinelli.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Kruger.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hart.
Yes.
Mia Moore.
Yes.
Motion heard.
Alright, item six. B. Ordinance approved the first and only reading calling a bond election to be held in the city of Port Ransis, Texas, making provision for the conduct of joint election and resolving other matters incident and related to such election. Welcome.
Hello Mayor, I was with you all. Two weeks ago via Zoom. My name's Mark McLean with Samco Capital Markets. Today we're talking about the possibility of calling a bond election in the amount of six and a half million dollars for various street improvements. You should have a copy of the actual bond election order ordinance. I won't read through the sixteen streets unless you would like me to. We'd list it's proposition A and there will only be one proposition for amount up to six and a half million dollars for the sixteen streets and I'd be happy to read the streets if you would like. And it's to be paid for from ad valorem taxes. It's believed and structured that it won't impact the tax rate. The rate, not the levy. And that's just, you know, everybody wants to, you know, especially this time of year, rate and levy get confused in the public. Rate is what you all authorize the levy is the actual dollars coming in. So this won't affect and we actually believe it will decrease over the next couple of years, the tax rate. I'm happy to go into details. I'm happy to read the streets. I'll leave it to you Mayor, what you would like. But this is timing wise, it calls the election for November eighth and we have until August twenty-second to actually call that election. So this is really the opportunity to do that.
So just so you know, so if so pass or fail. If a, if a street bond fails. The streets on your list cannot be bonded over the next three years. You can spend your own cash on them, right?
Well, you can't do, you can't change to what's called a certificate of obligation. You have as a council have the ability to call an election every time and it could be continually failed. But you can call a bond election anytime and you have two opportunities to do that. You can do a May election or August. So if any of these, if you have the bond election and it fails. You cannot change your mind and say, well, we still have to do Ross Avenue. We're gonna issue a certificate of obligation. Cannot do it for three years.
Because it's on the list.
Okay.
Now you could do another road that's not on the list.
Yes.
Or we could call for another bond.
Or you could call a bond election anytime.
You can do a street and drainage bond election that doesn't even have a list, but then it gets really dangerous because if it fails. Then you can't do any CFO for a street for three years. So it's a little bit safer to list, to have a list. But there's always, there's risk both ways.
Yes, sir. So I might have missed it, but at one point I think we talked about that striping of streets would be in this.
Well, typically like, for example, like when we did the eleventh street bond. It, it, it came in under the bonding amount and it'll let us add to the, to the list. So we would hope that this comes in. The way it's structured, it comes in a little good and you can add some potholes and striping on top of this. So that's our hope is that it, it's, it's, it's designed to.
So the question would be if it fails.
You guys could, you guys could do that out of your street.
Okay.
You could tap into your, you could still tap into your street fund that you guys have and still do a pothole project and a striping project. Yes. Yeah, that funding's in there still.
It'd be really nice to be able to get these really done well.
Yes.
And that's the exact wording that'll be in the proposition then at the bottom of page three, eleven of this. Top of page four. Or top of page four.
But when we advertise for the bond, assuming this passes and we go forward, the streets will be outlined so that the citizens do have an idea of what streets are included.
Right. And then with, with with drainage, if the drainage is ancillary to the street. It, you don't have to specifically list it.
Okay.
So if there is drainage associated with whispering sands, it's, it's ancillary to the street. You don't have to separately do a separate vote for the drainage portion.
And the citizens know that they're voting on a set amount, but not the necessary impact on their tax rate at that point in time.
They, because we won't know what the tax, the interest rate on the loan, we won't know what your taxable value is. The Attorney General and, and state law requires us to put what, put in here, the estimate, what we think will happen. And so we've run numbers and we believe that, and it's in here in section eight of the, of the ordinance. We believe it's not going to take any, make any impact to the tax rate, to the rate, again, not the levy. Just, you know, we can't say John's house got reevaluated fifty thousand higher. And his tax rate is going to go up even if the tax rate stays the same. Again, same thing you're going through during budget season.
Understood. I just want to make certain that, you know, citizens are gonna know what they're voting on.
Yes.
Okay.
And you know, one thing Mayor, you said advertise, we can be factual. We can't promote.
Right.
When I say.
Cheerleaders, we can be.
Sure.
Right. These are the streets. These are the plans. Here's the map. But that's it.
Yep. I thought it was more the city itself has to be factual. An individual council member can go out and be a cheerleader by themselves, can't they? But.
Not as a council member, not behind a dais.
Right, not behind the dais. What is a, but not as an individual council member?
No. Again, if they're working as a council member at the time, if, if, you know, in, as silly as this says, you know, we've had people that, you know, lawyers that say, okay. I'm the mayor, but now I'm being a citizen and I'm changing my hat.
Right.
Something that obvious, but it's, if it's a council function. You can't say we're for this project. You need to be voting for it. You amongst your friends can say. You know, this to me is really a good idea and that's why we're taking it to the voters.
What about a council member at a you know, city, at, at a one of the clubs like?
That's where I would get in. I might lean to your city attorney on that, but that's where I'd say if I'm that council member, it's I'm speaking as a citizen, not on behalf of the city council.
Right.
Because everybody has their first written amendment rights, but you, they don't have it as a council member as of something promotional.
So if I'm at my salon and I have a client that lives here and I ask my opinion?
I think you can say as a, as a citizen, I think this is good.
Right.
As a council member, I can't promote it.
Okay.
You know, we're, that's why we're putting it to you as the voters.
Gotcha.
Right, we can, we can tell them the facts. Like we can put out information that this is the bond, this is the impact to your budget. These are the streets. But that's kind of the end of it.
That's right.
We don't put, this is a great thing because blah, 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 blah.
I, I had a three-year, a city council that I represented a three-year fight with the Ethics Commission in Austin because they put on their brochure. Please vote with an exclamation point, not please vote for, please vote. And because there was an explanation point, the Ethics Commission said that was wrong. And it wasn't, they, it was really saying, we really want you to get out and vote.
Right.
And let us hear, but because they.
Of the specific item.
And so that, I mean, it really, the, the, the city had spent a lot of money just defending it and it was as simple as as that. So I mean, it really, you just want to be, walk on the side of angels with this. A it passes and there's a group that was against it. There was use. What did they do wrong? Or it fails and the group that's for it's gonna say, what did they do wrong? And so there's just, in today's society, it's just better to just walk as clean as possible. You as a citizen have your rights to say anything, but you as a council can't promote. Staff cannot promote. Someone salaried by the city cannot at all be, and that's twenty-four seven. They don't have the First Amendment protections there according to the bond lawyers and the Texas Ethics, Ethics Commission.
Right, we're just, we're, we're limited to factual information.
It's a very thin line that you should not want to have to spend money on defending. So I would highly recommend that if you're asked a question. You can respond factually by saying if the majority of the voters approve, this is what's going to happen.
Right.
If majority of the voters disapprove, this is what will happen.
Keep it very vague.
I don't think, I think this is actually very informative.
Right.
Like if you vote yes, this happens. If you vote no, this happens.
But vague on your own opinion. Yes. I, I get it. We just learned some of this in our open meetings and we just got back from San Antonio and we learned a lot of this and that. So, okay.
With that said, I understand First Amendment rights. I certainly have family who's fought for that right and certainly believe in that constitutional right. It's just a matter of.
Right. Better safe than.
Right. And it's like, just be safe. It can be informative about what happens if the majority of the voters vote yes and what happens if the majority of voters vote no.
Okay.
And I will add Norton Rose Fulbright, who's your old bond lawyer on this. They will send a memo that ties to the do's and don'ts. If council authorizes us to proceed. I just saw one that called a bond election for Newton Independent School District and Texas City Independent School District. And with that approval. A memo went out to staff that then was to forward at the council.
Um, Mar, I would like for you to read the streets real quick.
Okay, yes. Nope, my pleasure. So it's six and a half million dollars. Related to now my eyes, related to the following streets. Portions of Ross Avenue. Portions of Church Street. Portions of Brundret, Brundret?
Brundret, yep.
Brundret Avenue. Portions of White Avenue. Portions of Whispering Sands Streets. Portions of Eskridge Street. Portions of Pollen Street. Portions of Oleander Street. Portions of Tarrant Avenue. Portions of Oaks Avenue. Portions of Trojan Street. Portions of Ninth Street. Portions of Avenue. High. I didn't know if there's a higher one. Portions of Alister Street. Portions of Port Street. Portions of Beach Access Road one A. And the reason we say portions, if we, you could be as specific and say, we're going from here to here and then that's all that can be done. So this gives you, you know, there's a long street. This portion may be worse off than this portion. We're gonna do this. That again, it's gonna be into your all's discretion if it's approved. With, with your engineers, your staff, you know, what needs to get improved on these streets?
Dave, any feel for what you've got feel on the recent history of approvals of bonds like this? Success rate?
The last, in the last seventeen years. I think we've gone five for five.
Okay.
And, and the benefit here is the tax rate is still on a declining threshold.
And the other benefit is that this is probably one of the biggest complaints I get as a council person.
Yes.
So street condition. So people realize it's a, it's necessary. Odd.
A lot of people think it's money well spent.
Yes. So Dave. How was the amount? Six point five million.
Well, I'm like, that, that.
Well, we wanted, we had discussed at the last meeting, we wanted to leave. We wanted to with, with the fire station concept. If that comes in a little bit short, it gives you guys something to grab because if we went for the full money. You'd be, you'd, you'd have nothing left in your bonding capacity. So this way you're sitting around six and a half. If fire comes in, two to three shy.
We have some.
You guys have the ability to go grab something. And just for, you know, any emergency you guys have. Cause you guys could always, if this was really successful and the citizen says, hey, thanks, we, you guys keep going, fix more stuff. You know, you come back in another year.
Any other discussion, questions for Mike?
Yeah.
Alright. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that will adopt an ordinance calling for a bond election as outlined in this item. My second.
Okay, any further discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Yes.
Countess Mertinelli.
Yes.
Councilmember Kruger.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hart.
Yes.
Mia Moore.
Yes.
Motion heard.
Thank you Mayor, Council. I'm gonna stay for the next item of the, uh, hear, hear about the audit. I hear it's been very good. So I want to hear that. We'll use this when we work on that fire station funding. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Darla, you want to do the intro?
Is, I can't see the crowd. Is Mark Kennedy there yet?
Yes.
Yes, he's here.
Yes.
Okay. So we have auditors here.
Sorry. Darla, let, uh, let the mayor read the resolution first.
So it's item C resolution, accepting and approving the annual financial report for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. As presented by Park Fowler and Company, PLCC and directing publication as required by the Home Rule Charter. Sorry. There you go, Darla.
Okay, so we have Mark Kennedy with Park Fowler here to do a presentation on the audit. I believe he actually still has it in a draft status as we just got a copy, but he can explain all that and go through everything for you.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me here. The last zone is correct. Uh, this was a very good audit. You guys did an outstanding job. Uh, we had no issues with it. That includes the single audit portion. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar, when you get federal funds, you have to undergo what's called a single audit. Um, which is basically making sure that you've spent the federal funds that you got correctly. Within parameters of what is allowable by federal laws and limitations. Obviously, it's our first year with you. So it was nice to see such a clean audit the first year. It's not always the case. A lot of times we actually have to kind of train up our, our city managers and the other people we work with. Darla needed no such training whatsoever. She knows this stuff pretty well. Uh, she's been a, a great resource for us and I want to thank her for that. Basically, the highlights here is for your, your most recent fiscal year, your net position is about seventy million dollars, which is an increase of around twenty-six million from last year. You had a really good year financially. That's what it really comes down to. If you have any questions, by the way, you just stop asking me, shout it out. I don't, I don't mind. I can answer anything you need to. Uh, the one reason that this is a draft is we are having technological problems. There's nothing to do with anything here. It is literally, I cannot find a way to get my word to actually accept all the schedules that I put together and in there. And I think this is, um, uh, an issue in IT and we have somebody coming out tomorrow. So hopefully we'll fix that. And if he does in the morning, then Darla will get an updated draft that will contain number twenty-one numbers, but all the twenty twenty-one. I was able to manually go in and, and change a lot of this stuff today. But for the life of me all week, I just cannot get these things to work. Fortunately, the main schedules, all the main financial statements are correct. The only changes that may occur is if Darla wants us to, to move something from one fund to another. Uh, we tried to follow her guidelines, but she didn't have a chance to look at that, that. So it's just minutia that may change. Uh, the overall figures will not. So it may be, you know, you have twenty-six million in a fund today and it may be twenty-five, five tomorrow, just and that extra half million has been moved somewhere else and that's fine. Um, she's gonna have to also let us know if there's anything that we, that we missed that we don't know about, uh, as far as how you guys wanted to set aside money for particular, uh, not actually restricted, but just set aside by you. There's a difference. Uh, if you don't know the difference, basically restricted means you can only use it for that particular purpose. The other way is when you basically assign, uh, these funds for something that, that's just, you know, as a council saying this is how we prefer to spend the money. It's not a legal requirement. Uh, you are sitting on, uh, quite a bit of, of, of good assets now, especially in your capital assets. Um, you're, you've grown quite a bit. So you have a, a lot to be, to work with there. Internet doesn't know there's a difference between the two types of financial statements that are presented. We have a government wide. And then your particular financial statements and government wide is basically where we take the governmental funds and accounting. As the financial statements, which is your governmental funds are almost not identical because basically what I'm looking at expenditures and revenues, we don't look at categorized assets. We don't look at those liabilities the same way. This all has to do with budgeting at that point in time. You you, as I said before, you, you passed your, uh, uh, single audit quite easily. We only look at your FEMA funding this year because A, it's our first year and B, that got us the coverage that we need. And but I want to stress how important it is that you continue to use those FEMA funding correctly. And she's done a great job of that thus far. The reason I say that is because I have a background in auditing FEMA uh, funds received by the state of Texas and giving to recipients. And I have seen some nightmares situations come out of there. So please just continue doing what you're doing. Don't change anything. Okay? Any questions so far? Nothing so far? Okay, uh, we have three different reports in here. Uh, one is your, just your regular financial statement report. And of course that was a clean opinion. That report will look a little different starting next year. It's the same thing as, as, uh, always been this year. Next year, under the standards, they're gonna change the way the reports look. The things about that is the very first thing you're gonna see is the opinion. You don't have to go down to find it. It's right there first thing. Obviously, like I said before, your opinion is clean. That basically means that we did not find anything of substance that we were concerned about. Uh, so in all material aspects, as far as we're concerned, your financials are spot on. The second report and the third report are kind of interrelated and they have to do with all of those, uh, federal funds that, that you spend. And it's looking at the internal controls over them. And then just the general opinion on the, the program expenses and how you, uh, administer those. Both of those were fine. The internal controls, we don't actually issue a true opinion on. Basically just look at your internal controls and say that we find a reason to have concern and we did not. Uh, there's always gonna be room for improvement. I will never tell you there won't be, but I don't think, I saw anything that, that gave me a cause of alarm. And nothing made me go, I need to write a management point here. Uh, I think Darla and her staff did an excellent job of this and you should be pretty proud of her. Anything else you'd like to know? Cause I don't want to take up a whole bunch of your time just reading out a whole bunch of numbers to you, right? Because that's gonna bore you and pretty much everyone behind me. Probably I'll throw things out in the end of it if I do that. Anyone?
So we should continue to have an excellent bond rate.
Uh, yes, I would, I would, yes. Just absolutely, yes. So.
We had a lot of growth.
What's that?
We had a lot of growth. It's your.
Yes, a ton of growth, uh, you know, on the revenue side especially. It was pretty remarkable, um, from year to year. Uh, I think Darla was telling me that you're one of the fastest growing cities in all of, of Texas. So congratulations for that. That's pretty cool. More than I will, I don't believe most, like I said, those, those overall numbers aren't gonna change. It's just little, little notes and schedules in the back that are gonna change. And they'll just show the same thing. It'll just tie it all these, all these numbers up in front. Just can explain a little bit further. Um, especially, uh, there's been some things I did want to tell you about. I almost forgot about this. It has to do with the shown, uh, the liabilities and deferreds. In the past, um, it, it's been reported on the changes and deferreds every year. Um, we'll do that. We, we do the whole thing because we consider that filicule accounting. Uh, so you will, you will look at this number and say, well, that's a big number compared to last year. And that's why we just captured everything in the past. And, and we're gonna capture everything going forward. So from here on out, you can compare directly last year's with, uh, the next year and you'll see the changes by subtracting the two numbers or looking at the change in numbers, but uh, we don't believe that's, uh, that's more accurate way of accounting. And, and we've, we've had the GFOA express the same type of thing to us, but we don't have a clear definitive answer. That's just our preference. So, um, if you have any issues with that. We can go back to the other way, but I, I think it's better to stick to filicule under, um, our model which shows all the past activity and combined it all to say, what is your, what are your deferred, uh, outflows and inflows? And that's basically just what is, what are you gonna be responsible for paying or receiving in the future? Um, including all those pension benefits and those ultimate benefits because those are likely to change every year, probably drastically. I don't need too much stock in those numbers. I'm gonna worry about them if they change a lot. We just do it just for full presentation and it's always a matter of conservatism. I think when you do that, it's just conservative way of accounting. Anyways, I thank you very much for your time. And if you don't, if you don't have anything else, I'll put it out of your hair.
Anybody have any questions? I know we just got it.
Right, right. I'll, I'll be sending out, I'll be sending out a, a, a much better copy, a cleaner copy of Phil and, uh, hopefully tomorrow afternoon, but if the IT guy is late, then it'll be Monday. if the IT guy is late, then it'll be Monday. Just depends. He, he's on his own schedule. I don't know if you guys have that same thing here, but our IT guy's on his own, own world schedule. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Mark.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, any other discussion? Frank, can you call the roll, please?
Council member Sinoff.
Yes.
Member to Owen.
Yes.
Council member Chambers.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Council member Park.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, item D, ordinance, second reading, approving a zoning change request, ZCR twenty-two zero zero one zero six five, changing property located at fifty-two hundred State Highway three sixty-one zone from Newport Planned Unit Development NPUD zone to one particular harbor planned unit development OPHPUZ as requested by Ocean Harbor Inc., providing for the validity of said ordinance and repealing all prior ordinances in conflict here within and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, this is actually a second reading. Uh, the only reason it didn't appear on your consent agenda is because we did add some additional information that I made part of your package, and it's, uh, uh, we went back and consistent with some of the other planned unit developments, we just wanted some graphical representation of, of what, what it was going to look like, especially when it came to some of the mixed use, uh, mixed use product. Um, something that we could really go back and say, wait a minute, this is what you told us, uh, it was going to look like, and, uh, that, that's kind of consistent with the planned unit development ordinance. That there's a, there's a harmonious balance between the mixed use. That's why they're giving that flexibility, and so we just wanted a little bit more, um, uh, visuals that we could look at, and so they, uh, they did produce this for us. Uh, it will be, uh, I've already talked with, uh, with the developer, and, and it will actually become part of the PUD document on the third and final reading. Um, but other than that, it's the, uh, it is the same, uh, the same, uh, project and zoning request change that you saw previously, uh, which just changes the previous, uh, Newport, um, planned unit development tract into this one particular harbor. So I'll, uh, since you guys already have seen it, I'll stop there. Uh, I'm sure the developer would be happy to answer any questions with his engineer too, if there's any technical questions that I can't answer.
Is there any questions from council regarding the additional information provided?
No, ma'am.
Makes a motion? Nope, yeah. No, no, okay, no.
Motion to approve.
Okay. I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Frank, call the roll, please.
Member to Owen.
Yes.
Council member Sinoff.
Yes.
Your fellow Chambers.
Yes. Yes.
Council member Christian.
Yes.
Council member Park.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay. All right, item E, take, discuss and take appropriate action on PPLT and FPLT twenty-two zero zero one four five zero, final plat of Palmyra Beach PUD Unit Seven. Applicant is KM Beach LLC, property location thirty-eight hundred Highway three sixty-one, Palmyra PUD.
No, thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, one of the many, uh, replats we see in these master plan developments, master plan puds. Uh, of course, uh, this one being, um, in the Palmyra Beach Plan Unit Development. Uh, so this is just again a Unit Seven, uh, the engineers here, the, uh, the drawings that basically uh, identify the specific new lots that'll be created, uh, as part of this plat. Uh, it's clearly consistent with the original master plan intent, uh, for a mixed-use residential, uh, development. Uh, with that, uh, we recommend approval. Utilities did all, uh, weigh in to see, uh, and there was a reconciliation between our, uh, city, the city engineer and our acting reviewing engineer too. One final, this, this, we don't always see this, but there is a requirement from our reviewing engineer that the, uh, the previous replat sixty, Unit Sixty, is recorded prior to the, uh, uh, recording of this plat, so that's not unusual, and, uh, I trust that we'll make sure that that happens, Stephen, so. They're just moving pretty fast and furious, right?
Anybody have any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve final plat Palmyra Beach PUD Unit Seven.
All right.
My second.
Okay, discussion. Frank, please call the roll.
Council member Christian.
Yes.
Council member Park.
Yes.
Council member Friger.
Yes.
Council member Chambers.
Yes.
Member to Owen.
Yes.
Friger.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion here.
All right, item M, discuss and take action to confirm dune permit application BF BP twenty-one twenty-four oh four seaside condominiums dune walkover is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The applicant proposes to construct a dune walkover at the seaward edge of the parking lot for safe pedestrian access across the public beach. Applicant is Sandcastle Holdings LLC, property location is eight forty-one Sandcastle Drive.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So this is a project that's been ongoing, um, uh, for a while. And, uh, to the, uh, applicant and the engineers' credit and patience, we've, uh, you know, we've gone back and forth, and we've had certain requests and and, um, like I said, I, I think we've hammered out a, a, a pretty good, uh, a pretty good project. It doesn't, exactly as they say, afford, uh, 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 a level of safety that we can't dispute. So that, uh, um, like I said, that's why, uh, staff will recommend approval. There, there was some back and forth. One of the delays, of course, was some back and forth with the GLO and, and Craig Hanson, uh, the submitting engineer from, uh, Craig Thompson from Hanson is here. I'd ask, I asked him if he would just kind of come up and just kind of go through that, because like I said, he spent considerable time, uh, probably considerable expense of the applicant to, uh, to hammer out these details with GLO. So I just wanted him to kind of, uh, explain that back and forth. It ultimately led to what, uh, is a, uh, is, is a GLO, uh, unapproval.
So before we go forward, um, there's some discrepancies. Um, the boardwalk shows to be six feet in some places, and then on a map, it shows to be five foot wide. So, so. Right, that needs to be resolved, obviously.
And, and the last iteration and comments back with GLO, there was some clarification so that it is six feet wide.
But I mean, one of your, one of your maps shows it to be five.
Still, still, one of the maps, okay, well, um, let me be here to say, by the way, thank you for having me, Mayor Councilmembers, Craig Thompson with Hanson Professional Services. Do have the, uh, the owner, Dr. Sunil Ready, and his representation here today. Um, little bit of background real quick. Um, we, we, we knew that this, you know, that there could be some concerns about a dune walkover this close to a beach access road. Um, one of the things right off the bat that I had actually asked the owner to do was to provide a bit of a background, and I think that's been provided in your packet and also been provided within the, the, uh, the dune permit itself. Um, what it really does is start to describe what the, uh, project is. Um, the, uh, the, the owner, um, Sandcastle Holdings and Dr. Sunil Ready have purchased the seaside condominiums there at the corner there. Uh, has put in quite a bit of work. I don't know if y'all have been noticing. They've, uh, finished most of the exterior components of it. They're starting the interior components, hoping to be completed with the interior of it, uh, by the end of the year. Hopeful again, fingers crossed. Um, and part of what their desire to do with this property is to be able to utilize this property for, uh, rehabilitation and therapeutic use. Um, the, the owner is a doctor, owns several, um, certain type facilities throughout this area and throughout the country, and desires to use this again as kind of a a downstream therapeutic rehabilitation type center for some elderly folks. And so that again is why the expense, willing to go through the expense and effort and time to do a dune walkover uh, really felt, uh, strongly about the need for a safe pedestrian access, um, over the dunes and into this property. Certainly, we understood with the dune walkover right there, golf carts, vehicles like that could certainly access, and so right off the bat, we started to look at to limiting the width of it, and then also the design of the dune walkover with the turn, the turn back or the setbacks within the landing as it comes down to the beach over the dunes. It's a pretty high dune ridge right there. And so the willingness to do several setbacks, obviously at quite some cost, but to try and meet some of those slopes that are required for ADA accessibility, it, it is pretty much impossible to be able to design a dune walkover for ADA accessible routes. The spacing on the slats are actually too wide to even meet ADA, and so we're not necessarily that, but the slopes and everything else, the width were there for, for basically to promote that type of pedestrian accessible route down to the beach. Safety is paramount. I think you can probably read through here and what the, the owner and his, his folks are, are mentioning. It's really about a safe pedestrian route to the beach from, from this property. Again, we recognize and we started meeting with staff very early on, appreciate their patience as well. Uh, because we do recognize right next to a, to a, uh, beach access road like this, some of the questions that would be coming from the engineer. The engineer, your city engineer asked some of those questions about that. Uh, GLO asked some of those questions about that. And so again, we've limited to six foot wide, the way that the turnbacks are towards the end coming down. This is not meant for golf carts. And in fact, throughout this, we've provided that this is pedestrian-only access and really about a safe route. Um, so getting into some of the comments from, from GLO, one of them was to clarify that this is a six-foot-wide dune walkover. Evidently didn't do a good enough job, Councilmember. I promise you, I will go back in and fix that, but this is meant to be a six-foot-wide dune walkover. Um, and with that, to meet GLO guidelines for building dune walkovers, we have elevated every portion of this a minimum of six feet high. The profile, because of the movement of the dunes, obviously, we are much higher than six feet in some areas, but a minimum of six feet high above the surface of the dunes to the bottom of the dune walkover. The reason for that is really to allow the migration and movement. Those dunes are alive to, to allow for the move, the movement of those dunes back and forth, sand back and forth, vegetation to be able to grow back and forth. So we elevate it. We have certain slat spacing there for the wood slats. It's a minimum of half an inch. You'll notice that's one of the comments GLO mentions. That's again for sunlight, for rain, for things to be able to get through those dune walkovers. Um, one of the components that GLO had also asked about was, we do, and this is again, one of the things that the owner, Dr. Ready, is really, uh, adamant about and really passionate about, is to be able to provide an area within about halfway from the parking lot or from the building to, to the actual beach, to be able to provide a bit of a turnout and a bit of a place for people to sit. I say turnout, but it's more about for those pedestrians to be able to take a seat, relax on their way there, maybe congregate together, enjoy the view of the beach, that type of thing. We had initially had a pretty wide, robust area there. It was ten by twenty on both sides. Uh, GLO commented and, and thought that that was a little too large, and so we came back and limited it to eight feet wide and twelve feet long on, again, on both sides. So we do have there, so real quick, if it was just a dune walkover, there would be no permanent impacts to dune walk, to, to the, uh, to the dune system itself, even the critical dunes. Because we've elevated it because of the slat spacing, we're building it according to GLO guidelines. There are no permanent impacts. There are temporary impacts which certainly need to be mitigated. But because we have that seating area, and it's a little wider there, those areas that are underneath that seating area, so that those areas that are underneath that eight by twelve basically are considered impacts of the dunes. And then as we come down, the dune walkover does get relatively close to the dunes, and there are some areas there that were, are considered impacts to dunes. So again, we do have some impacts. You will see some mitigation, uh, in, in here because of those impacts. Um, again, most of them are at that turnout, um, and at, as we come down. Uh, we, we do get within closer to six feet as we come down the dunes. Again, coming down the face of the dunes, GLO allows that to happen because they understand as you're coming down to the beach, you are able to get that. But the rest of the dune walkover is elevated more than six feet. Um, and so there are some impacts. Our mitigation procedures are spelled out within the permit. Um, I think they, GLO typically asks for those to be spelled out. That may have been one of the comments there. We are leaving all of the sand as part of the dunes that we're impacting. We're leaving those sand, that sand in place. In the areas where we will do our mitigation, we will scrape the vegetation off. We will bring in new sand to the dunes, so reinforcing the system as it is right now, and then we will take that seed bank, the top six inches to a foot or so, we'll take that seed bank. We stockpile it off on the side, let it continue to germinate and do what it does. Bring it back, spread it back over the top of it so that, that, that vegetation, that natural dune vegetation is allowed to grow there. We've had quite a bit of success with our mitigation areas like that. And so, um, again, some of the GLO was more clarifying the width against six feet. I do apologize. I will make sure. I want to make sure that y'all know that it is meant to be six feet wide. Um, and then some of the clarification with GLO, which was reducing the size of that, uh, that turnout, that seating area. And then I think some of their other comments were things like, um, obviously, that's G, not obviously, y'all may not know, but that's GLO land that we're crossing right there, and so any, uh, activity like this, whether it's with the, uh, mitigation or whether it's with the dune walkover, will require a permit with GLO. Uh, the owner has already reached out to them and started that process. Obviously, wanted to wait until this permitting effort was underway. Will be creating construction drawings, uh, that will then go into the city for a building permit and, um, finishing up the permit with the GLO, uh, with the owner. So again, the owner is here, Dr. Ready's here, and myself take any questions or answers that I miss in.
The concern with it being close to the road is blind corner and, and, and interacting with the pedestrians. Is that your?
It's just a heavily trafficked road, and in the, in the end, what we finally, uh, we finally just discussed was we couldn't dispute that there was some margin of safety provided by that location. Once we do, once we determine that, arguing how much more kind of was a moot point, you know?
Just wanted to.
And, and again, he mentioned this, and I think it's important because, uh, to Craig's credit and Hanson firm and a lot, and his colleagues as well, these walkovers that we've seen as of late, the last decade. When you look at that profile, it is up and over, and, uh, and when, when we talk about impact of dunes, he explained, you know, what GLO considers, considers an impact. But the truth is, these things are up and over, uh, and there's a pretty good argument. I, I won't get into philosophical debate, but there's a good argument that that's much preferable than pedestrian cut-throughs that used to exist that just kind of create a pathway of water up, so, um, but it is, it is something that, that, uh, hadn't always happened, but in the last, uh, ten years, uh, our engineers have done a really good job of going up and over, so.
So does this include wheelchair accessibility or not?
So we tried, there, there are no steps within this. We have tried everything we can to make it an accessible route. And that's why, again, the switchbacks and
Right.
there's added expense, obviously, with all of that. Um, that's why those, those switchbacks are the way they are, so that we can keep the slopes pretty close to what ADA slopes are. ADA slope, I believe, on a ramp like that is, uh, like one in like, go ahead, yeah, like a one in twelve, like a eight percent slope. And as you're coming down off of the dune, that's fifteen feet high down to beach level, and you're trying to do it outside of the public access areas for the beach, it's not always easy. Again, that's why some of the switchbacks, and that was where some of the impacts were made. Um, but we, we felt it important again to, to provide that type of access.
Are there any issues with getting wheelchairs through the ballards across there to the beach, Rick? I don't know even how. I know getting through the ballers sometimes on my bicycle.
They gotta get, they gotta get to the ballers once they get.
Right, yeah, there's still loose sand, but there's, uh, you know, but there are means of, of, uh, you know, there are means to do that. We have a couple of, of, uh, beach type of chairs.
I was going to say that there's different.
Yeah, I don't know how wide they are.
Wheelchair that was within a sand. It's got a wider tire, kind of like what you would with a bicycle, right? It's got a nice wide tire so that they can.
And they can make it through those, okay.
Just real, real quick, Craig, one thing that we do here in Port Aransas is that the terminus is set by staff. Um, if you look at in, in years past, we've had plans where it's really hard to determine where the, where the the dune walkover is coming out onto the road. And some drawings have said, well, you guys had a detailed drawing, and it comes out ten feet in the road, and we're like, well, we're not going to let you out ten feet in the road, so we've, we started probably about six or seven years ago where staff comes out and sets your corner. And you guys kind of have to work backwards to make sure it, it fits, but thi- this one, this one's pretty critical. If you look at the, the two dunes, the two dune walkovers just to the north of this, see how they terminate back behind the, the driving lane? And we want to make sure that, um, like that one there, dog legs back, but it, it's, it stays. You know, the terminus stays well behind the driving lane. So we, we just want to make sure that you guys understand that our staff is going to set where you guys come out. And you got to make sure your design, whoever your builder is knows to kind of work a little bit backwards, because if they get too far along and they come out, and then they say, well, we can't do that. We were already built out this far. So they need to make sure they come to, come to us and get where that stake is going to be set.
And, and that's something you said you've had for a little while.
Yeah.
Something New Oasis County does as well. We're used to it. We've met Rick on a couple of them.
All right.
Absolutely no problem. And the understanding is a little back and. On a couple of them, so absolutely no problem. And the understanding is a little back and forth, right? Because because that may change over time a little.
Yeah.
We've come out to build this, there may be some changes in some of the construction drawings when we go to that, but certainly an understanding on both ends that we can make that.
Okay, alright.
Um, will there be any lighting on this boardwalk?
I don't know.
Yes.
So what kind of lighting will be on this board? I I just don't want this to be a very.
Right, typically, we don't like it. We don't, there's not elevated lights, it's low voltage lighting.
It would be yeah, low voltage under the rails or something, because because this is a very long boardwalk.
Yeah.
And so, you know, want this to be a big, bright.
You know, and it kind of defeats the, I think, the purpose for a lot of them where you have the observation, you want that that night sky effect, so to speak. So most of that we look at uh is. Low voltage under rail, you know, just to light the pathway. Okay, you take that. Thank you, Craig. And with that, uh, like I said, this was approved by planning and zoning and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve doom permit application, the P P twenty-one dash twenty-four oh four.
Okay, I'll second. Alright, any further discussion? Graham, please call the roll.
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cougar?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Seeloff?
Yes.
Member to Billings?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, resolution awarding request for proposal R F P Port Street Parking Lot. Funds from Hotel Motel Special Fund Account one 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 zero, Capital Outlet Account number five zero three one zero. And authorizing the city manager to act as the executive officer and authorized representative of the city in all matters pertaining to said bid award.
Hello, I'm Anthony Allen. I'm with Urban Engineering. So. We had the bid opening on Friday and it was a close bid, um, three hundred and sixteen dollars between first and second lowest bidders. Um, I called all of the references, so five current projects, five past projects. Um, got a thumbs up, recommended approval by. Five of the references and four internal urban engineering um engineers that have worked with them. Um, I did go inspect two sites, uh, Airline Road and. In front of docks and snoopy's and Corpus Christi. Um, Airline Road is a really nice looking concrete paved. Road, uh, it kind of cemented the recommendation for me, so I do recommend um J D Construction for this project.
Questions regarding?
My motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alright, there's a motion to second. Any further discussion? Graham, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Right, item H, general discussion of possible action on a conceptual bin and recycle program on the beach.
Good evening, council members, mayor, mayor pro town, city manager. Uh, my name is Suzie Seeloff, and um I am a board member with uh Keep Porterans is Beautiful. And I'm here with my full board member member hood over there, and uh we are proposing, um, I'm also uh. The lead on the um aluminum recycle task force for Keep Porterans is Beautiful. Uh, we um will are here to um request. Um, your permission to put three recycle containers on the beach. We're starting very small. Starting with three recycle containers um on the beach. Uh, next to uh trashcans, um, probably between the mile markers of twenty-five and forty. Um, to start, um, the the um containers. Uh, my husband and I and and a neighbor built one as a prototype and put it on the beach uh last month. With your permission to to just try it for a couple of weeks, and we had a good, we had a good response to that. Um, it's a, i- in your packet, you can see the picture of it. Um, it's basically a, uh, if you, if you know what a little tyke's uh. Uh sandbox is, if you have one when your kids were little or your grandkids. Um, it's a little tyke's sandbox that sits on top of a wooden container with that you can see through, so you can see the aluminum cans inside. Um, the the uh prototype is a little smaller. We're gonna make it a little bit bigger. I don't remember the dimensions, what we said we were gonna do it, but it's it's gonna be four feet, I think. Is that right? Four feet uh by four feet. Um, and then it's got holes in the top, so you can put the cans in, and then that kind of prevents other trash from getting in there. Um, if you if you have an open container, you get a lot of contamination. Um, with aluminum, um. It is probably the best thing that you can recycle right now. They do, they actually give you money for it, so that means that it is recycled. Um, and in fact, a a fun fact that I did find was that seventy-five percent of all aluminum that has ever been produced is still in um. Is still in use today. Uh, so it's it's worth doing it, and lord knows we have enough uh aluminum cans here in Port Aransas, and especially on the beach that maybe we can make a. Make an impact. Um. Uh, the, uh, these these containers would be completely managed by by Keep Porterans is Beautiful, um. From getting them onto the beach, removing them in the case of uh real high tide or storm. Um, storing them, storing the cans, emptying them, monitoring them for emptying them. Um, and then transporting the cans to uh Corpus Christi to recycle facility. Um, for for right now. Um, I I mean, eventually, what we'd like to see are more containers, possibly expand. Um, in the six, six or eight months to Roberts Point Park and put a few there. Um, and then eventually, the dream would be to have a uh company, recycle company, provide a. Provide an aluminum recycle large container like we have at Sandfest, that they would come and come and empty, so that we can, we could get the cans there. And then they would come and empty them, so that we wouldn't have to transport them to Corpus. But right now, we're willing to do that. Um, we have met with the Chamber of Commerce and we're working with them, and we'd like to use their um, their respect our island home. Um, and Flynn the Turtle and all that, and mix that in with it for for the signage on the outside of it. Uh. Uh, these are pretty heavy, too. They won't blow away. They weigh probably about seven pounds each, so um they 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 won't blow away. The the top on the turtle is actually. Fastened down so that it won't, won't blow up. Um, and right now, we have a door on the back where you empty it, and that door is latched, so or or zip tied shut, so it won't come open, so there's no problem with the cans. Uh, blowing on the beach.
And is the bottom part made out of uh metal or?
The the bottom of it has has the the, that's like plastic, it's actually plastic chicken wire.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's that's on the bottom of it. Um, and then and then that's wrapped around it, so uh and then that helps with drainage, too. If it rains or if people throw.
And it won't rust if it's not.
It will, right, right, that too. Um, and then if people throw half-full cans, and then it'll drain, drain out, so. Um, yeah, that's that that, yeah, there is mesh on the bottom of it.
And how many cans will this hold? Each one, but, boy, I don't.
This one here held over two hundred cans, the bottom, and the future ones will be, I don't know if I can speak to this or not, being on council, it's okay.
You you put it on the agenda, so I hope you speak on it.
There, the bottom is forty-eight by forty-eight, so we'll just take two by fours, eight foot and a half, and then put it together. Uh, in that, in that model, we're expecting somewhere upwards of five hundred cans, okay? Uh. They are heavy and they do not blow away, and we have gotten, if you look in that picture there, you can see the. Uh, you know, this is really great as far as most recycling efforts we've had. We've been doing this already with just bins and catching cans. And there you get, most people are good, and you get the one or two that throw some junk in. This one had nothing except.
Yeah, a couple of plastic bottles, people, what is the Q R code here for?
That's that's for Keep Porterans, that just takes you, and that could easily, what I. What I'd like to do is put it towards the Respect Our Island Home, because of course, then that, the that whole campaign has a lot. Uh, listed for for Port Aransas, so.
Don't forget you're asking.
Oh, yeah. There's nothing on the actual agenda item, but in your literature, it says that you're asking the city to basically pay to make the prototypes pilot. Uh, yeah, I understand that there is some money set aside within the budget for.
Money set aside for recycling this year, uh, efforts, I believe it was fifteen thousand, so. That was in last year.
Oh, in last year's budget.
Yeah, so I don't know if we passed that year budget, but.
Yeah, so if if that was available, we would be asking for for a thousand dollar funding for the construction of of those two, and then future.
And Suzie also put in for another grant as well.
I I did, I did a a grant with a. For a five hundred dollar grant. I haven't heard back from them, so. And the the, like I said, the can, the containers would be. You know, we'd work with the city and the and the the beach workers of where the best place to put them, probably the best place is next to the uh, next to the trashcans where you can see it. But it won't interfere with the trash trucks or the bulldozers with that are on the beach right now. So we'll we'll work with them and make sure we we put it. You know, where.
Dave, is there any reason we can't do that?
Can't do what?
Put those out?
No, no.
Okay.
It's entirely up to you guys. We just want to make sure, you know, as long as they, you know, don't become eyesores and, you know.
Yeah, that's what it's.
You know, making them, making them, you know, it's just appearances, everything.
So I think what I'd recommend, just, um, I I'm for this, but I think we should have some kind of contract or something. In between Cape have and the city, so that way, if something. Hopefully, never would go south, we have something in writing.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I think.
Stating that they'll maintain.
Program, which I agree, probably needs to be some kind of pilot program, so that you guys have the time to, you know, determine whether or not it's. Effective successful, all those, they probably need to be outlined, some kind of terms and conditions.
Yes, we can do some kind of M O U. So.
Okay.
Yeah, just just so there's no, I mean, I don't think there would be, but that way, there is, won't be any issues.
I applaud Cape have's efforts to promote recycling, and I think that's, I think that's good.
Yeah.
I would like to see, I mean, if you are working with the chamber, if this does happen to be something that, you know, sticks around, um. I think is to Dave's point aesthetically, if if we're gonna incorporate, or if you're gonna incorporate Flynn the Turtle, then I'd like to see it look like Flynn the Turtle. It's a, it's a little, it's a, it's a little tight shirt.
Well, I was. Right.
Signage rather than what we have.
I mean, it's eye-catching for sure.
I mean, I think, you know, it it's clearly not the trash container. I think that's some of the benefit. We tried Cape have, well, we Cape have tried getting. A big fish to collect cans, and that was a disaster, and. This was, has been incredibly easy to do. We made it in a few hours and. It it's been very effective so far, so I have my hopes.
Um. I have thought. Okay, so do we need, since this is really just a discussion item, what what is our, um, can we take action?
What says action? Possible action.
Come up with some kind of agreement if everybody wants to move forward, is that the action item possibly move forward with?
So how would we work? So do we need to, since funding is not specifically mentioned in. Our packet, do we, can we make a motion to move forward with the funding too? I just make sure we're clear on.
Yeah, I don't see the point bringing it back.
Okay.
Well, that's why I just want to make sure we're okay.
Yeah.
It's all in there, right?
It would be from the beach fund.
Yeah.
To succeed, to start a pilot program with Cape have for three collection recycling bins and provided not a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Construction materials.
Yeah, direct city staff to develop a pilot M O U and get on down the road.
Someone got that? Make a motion to uh create a pilot program between K F A B and the city. Do I need to mention the thousand plus?
Yeah, yeah.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, funding.
Get the memorandum of understanding between.
With a memorandum and understanding. Is that good for you, Suzie?
Okay.
A second.
Alright, any further discussion? Graham, can you call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Seeloff?
Yes.
Member to Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item I, update general discussion of possible action on City of Porterans's bank depository with American Bank N A. Um, before we start this item, I want to disclose that because I am a employee of American Bank, and this is a discussion on a contractual agreement. With American Bank, that a possible agreement is a contractual agreement that I will not participate in the discussion.
Okay, so I guess this is mine. Um, I just have had several people ask me. A lot about the agreements uh between the bank and the mayor being the president of the bank. And they would like to just have some transparency of, um. Disclosure of what the actual laws are and where it stands. With the depository.
I mean, do, do we have a, is there a conflict of interest?
Exactly, so.
Is what it is, and what's the requirement? If there is a conflict.
Right, and so I think the city attorney can help us out with that, and then we'll just clear the air. It's transparency, and then everybody will know the answers.
The term conflict of interest actually has a legal definition as it applies to the city council. It is very, um. Specific definition, and being able to determine whether or not one has a conflict of interest. Is very factual in nature. Each of you, as elected officials, independently decide whether or not you have a conflict of interest or not. And so you should be aware what the definitions are, and we can go through that today or some other day. I want to specifically ask, ask, answer the question on whether or not there is a conflict of interest, I guess specifically. Related to the mayor. Um, I don't know if there's an actual conflict of interest, but I, what I can tell you. Is that there is a specific statute that talks about bank depositories. And in the statute, it specifically says that if a ma- mayor or any council member. Basically own ten percent or more of the bank, then the bank is disqualified from being a depository. If a mayor or any council member owns ten percent or less of the bank. Then the bank is still qualified to serve as a depository. But the individual elected official cannot vote on the depository agreement. That's as it specifically relates to a bank depository agreement. But the actual, that's in like one chapter of the local government code, uh involving municipal finances. But the actual definition of conflict of interest is in an entirely different section of the local government code, and we can go into more detail with that. But specifically, as it relates to the to the bank depository, my question's to each of you, do any of you own ten percent or more of the bank? If you do, then we can't bank with American Bank. If you don't, then American Bank can be. Qualified so long as they have an office in Texas, and our agreement with them is not longer than five years.
Right. Well, when this uh agreement occurred, or this, um. Mayor Moore was a city councilwoman at the time, so I would think if it was a conflict of interest, that should have popped up then. And Mayor Moore ran on the. Principles that if there was any conflict of interest, she would either abstain from voting, or she would not have run, had there been. It that big of a conflict of interest, in my opinion. This is just what I'd like to say.
Uh, I had a conversation with the city secretary earlier today, and. Fran, if it's okay, but you can. Fran, if it's okay, but you can just verify the facts that you told me. Um, we do have. A two-year contract with American Bank. With three one-year options, the end of the two-year term, which meets the five-year. Requirement, American Bank does have an office in Texas. And at the time that the bank, um, we applied for our requested proposals for a bank depository. Was advertised in newspaper. We did all the legal requirements for obtaining it. And and when the city council voted, um, then. Council member more abstaining from the vote. And I don't think that there's a problem.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
But 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 that's dependent on whether or not she owns more than ten percent of the bank. If she does, we'd all like to know.
What what particular conflict of interest did you think she had?
I didn't think so. I've I've had several people ask me, Kelly, so I just want to have it explained so people know. What the clarifications are and where it stands. That's it. So people will know now what the situations are.
So she doesn't sign on that depository, does she?
No.
Okay, so she can't, just internal controls. So she has no signage on it. And when you put out an R F P, whoever wants to respond responds.
Right.
And then we. See who gives us the best. Deal based on fees or.
Yes.
Risk rate or whatever they give us on that.
Right, and then then you can kind of jump into the charter section thirteen oh five personal financial interest. So when it does come to a situation like that. And it talks about this is personal financial interest, but it talks about express or implied. Of a person or corporation contract with the with the city shall render the contract involved void. Exception from this prohibition or one situations in which an officer discloses his interest to the city council as soon as. He becomes aware that he has such interest or is about to have such interest and. If the matter is placed before the city council for its consideration, the council finds it is, it is in the best interest of the city. To allow the transaction or stipulation creating the interest. So. The charter, you know, specifically says if it's in the best financial interest of the city, it's allowable.
Right.
I do want to state, can y'all hear me? Can you one hear me?
I mean, it's a valid question, but.
Well, people ask me.
As long as it's not ten percent. And I don't know the value or what stocks are trading at in American Bank today.
And so that's why one of the things I said was that each of you individually get to make that decision. None of us can actually tell you whether or not you have a conflict of interest. Because we don't know what your personal circumstances or financial circumstances are. The person who has any checks and balances uh, would be a district attorney or perhaps even the attorney general. If they decide that you do have a conflict of interest and you receive some sort of economic benefit from that vote, then you could be prosecuted for it. And the prosecution of it would be a class A misdemeanor, but um. The final determination as simple as we can get when it comes to the bank depository agreement is if any of you own. Ten percent or more of the bank, the bank's disqualified. If any of you own uh, less than ten percent. Then you just have to abstain from the participation of the depository agreement vote. Now, when it comes to other conflicts of interest, there's a whole nother definition and rules and regulations we got to follow, but for that I, for now, I hope that. Publicly answers the question um, for you.
Thank you. It's just transparency, you know, answers people's questions. Hopefully we don't get asked that anymore.
Any further discussion?
No one?
Nope.
Right, we're gonna move on. Item J, resolution adopting an amendment to the twenty twenty-one fee schedule by mending airport vehicle parking fee. Adding new floating dock fee for the municipal marina, amending parks and recreation program fees and providing perseverance and setting effective date.
So Fran, you gonna help me out with this one? I think there's about six changes, just run through them. Um, vehicle parking at the airport. Which is maxed out. And it's quite the deal. It's like uh. Thirty-seven cents a day. For a year, yeah. Um, so that's, that's one of the items. That's the first one under the, under the airport portion. Um, then you go back about five pages, six pages, seven pages.
So why do you only decide on thirty-seven cents a day?
Yeah.
What year was that?
Well, I I think Darla, are you still there?
I mean, is there?
I I think the hundred bucks has been in place for fifteen year, uh, maybe it was established back in about oh nine, oh eight. I think it was a Mike Kovak thing.
I don't remember it going up since I've been here in oh eight.
Yeah, so it's about, it's going on about fourteen years without an increase, so that's one. The second one is the um, floating docks with boat lifts. That's a brand new um, category. Cause we've never had boat slips that it rented out, but we're getting ready to have um, our project that you guys approved. Um, for dock ten area that's getting ready to come online and those tenants are, or it's. Every one of them's already got a name on it, so they're, they need a price. That that fee is very close to, so those are thirty-foot boat slips. They can accommodate accommodate up to thirty foot. So what we did was we added, we just, we took the thirty-foot. For a floating dock and we added a very, a very small percentage of electric. In maintenance on top of it because they're not individually metered, the whole docks metered. So we wanted to just get a small little chunk for electricity. And then a small, very small chunk for maintenance, because those things are gonna have some maintenance. So that's where that nine fifty um, a quarter came from. That's quarterly, right, Fran?
How much?
No, yeah, 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 because it's three thirty-seven a month. Yeah, that's a, that's a quarterly, that's a three month.
The nine fifty?
Yes.
And how, how much do they cost?
How much did they cost to put in?
Noel, are we buying the boat lift or are they supplying?
Well, we, it's part, it was part of the E D A grant, so it was part of the E D A five million dollar grant that we got. And then, you know, we built, I believe it's twenty.
Twenty-four. I think so.
Yeah.
And then how much did the, did the boat lift cost?
Joel might know that.
What sizes do we have?
They're, they're all the same, they're all.
Eight thousand or ten thousand.
The poundage are, they're, they're pretty high. It's uh.
They look thirteen.
I thought it was even above, I thought it was around fifteen thousand pounds.
So eight thousand's about, with getting them shipped and everything costs you about sixty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That's a eight thousand pound. You go to fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
You're talking about um.
But I think we could start off with this number and see how the maintenance is and we can always bring it back for an adjustment if we, if we're. If we're getting taken to the cleaners on them with the maintenance.
Maybe Councilman Owens knows, but I mean, do you have any idea? I mean, or Dave, are there comps for other areas? I mean, is that? What, like Corpus or South.
Ours, we ran ours are five hundred a month.
That's really cheap.
Yeah.
That's what I would think.
And Alamoans is about the same too. And there's a lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
My only suggestion on that, sir, would be to do comps and see.
Yeah, we did, we called around, um, but the the problem is, is that the private sector is always.
Yeah.
A lot higher than municipal. The municipal.
Or did you find a municipal that, that's um.
Um, Rob, Rob, our new harbor master office did the research. I'm not sure where he, what he found.
Yeah, I wonder if they. Put like motion switches on them. There's a lot of extra stuff they could have put on, would add to it, but yeah, there's a lot of maintenance to that.
But if it's around four, so this is a quarterly, so if it.
Yeah.
If it's generating four thousand. Um, a year to keep it maintained, keep it working and it lasts.
And electricity.
Four years. When it's time to replace, the city's gonna be the one replacing it.
Yeah.
And it'd be great to have. You know, money in the budget to say, yes, it's broken, we can't fix it. We'll swap it out, we're sorry, we'll get on it right away.
Those things should last twenty years.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're gonna get.
You know.
Yeah.
The main things, cables.
Yeah.
Motors. Police, just different stuff, but.
So what, do you want to see a higher amount?
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't want to get too crazy because I didn't want twenty-four boat guys in here next month.
No, I, that's why I said if we can do comps would be the only.
What do they think they're paying for it if they all have a name on it?
Well, they don't know, they don't know that, that we never put a number on it.
How would we change it if we agreed tonight, we just have to have another?
Yeah, yeah, we could, I could bring it in whenever we want it.
Yeah, I'm just worried, you said electricity, I am.
Yeah.
I will readily admit, I have no idea how much electricity boat uses, but I know like some rates are going up quite a lot.
I couldn't, I was trying to see what size lifts those were the other day. They have to be at least a thirteen thousand pound.
I mean, maybe, maybe a thousand, a thousand a quarter.
You're fifteen hundred a quarter, Joel, which you know somebody's renting for?
Yeah.
Would we be taking away any?
Not if he's got names on all of them.
Okay.
No, I mean.
I'm just saying, I don't want to do anything.
I I can't say that. I hope it's not fifteen of them.
No, there's like, I think we have a list of about.
I have a list of people, people call me all the time and I think.
Yeah, we need those, they're in the van.
I mean, I'd say a thousand at the most for now.
I think that's fair. I think four thousand a year is pretty fair for that.
And then, I I think then that we look, each year we look at it.
Yeah. Alright, so bump it up, bump that one up to a thousand. Okay, so. So there's that and then go back a couple pages more. Um, we have some parks and rec. Some of this is just verbiage. To any use, there's some language added there. Uh, four dollars to five dollars for a rec program drop-in fee went up a buck. Um, and then for. Program passes, activities and club pass, they developed this little club pass system where they want to do. Ten dollars each for uh, exercise, board games, sewing, dancing. And then a series fee would be if it's like a sewing class and they have four or five in a row. Then it's um, twenty dollars, which includes includes your supplies and expert instruction. And those are, those are from the uh, Colleen and her team. They're pretty minimal fees and then that's it.
So going back to the airport.
Yeah.
Um, so right now we're maxed out at the parking lot, correct?
Yeah, eventually we want to build, we want to, eventually we want to extend the park, yeah, I don't have my. Up up behind the um, up behind the hangars, we want to extend the parking lot. So it's, it's, you know, kind of a to be determined project.
That's so, uh, would it not make sense to increase it even above the two hundred dollars? To allow for future, you know, for the airport, you know, taxpayers shouldn't be paying directly for. You know, services just limited to airport usage.
No, I agree. I mean, that's why I I kind of felt uncomfortable dabbling in, you know, but going from one hundred to two hundred.
I was thinking a dollar a day, three hundred sixty-five dollar a year. Like here too. John, that's just, I'm still.
What we've, what we've discovered is that it's not being used by just pilots. It's, it's the place in town where, so there's, there's some out there that don't have an affiliation with a plane. And it's the cheapest place in town to go park your car.
Well, then maybe we need to move to a permit system and you've got to validate that you have some kind of.
Right, they get a permit.
Okay.
Yeah, it goes in the window, but but it's not like you have to come in and show us your plane to get the permit.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, there's people out there that might not have anything to do with the airport, right, Fran?
I mean, yeah.
The tail number associated with the vehicle that they have parked there.
Oh, they do? Okay, so that is some.
There's some association, yeah.
But it could be Kelly's, could be.
Yeah, it could be, hey, my Bob's tail number is eight, seven, five, nine, four.
I mean, I think if it in two.
It's, it's hard to say, how often do you use the airport and have some? Scale on there, you know, it's just, it's, it's hard to.
Is, is it parking though a problem to where a pilot comes in and or he, you know?
No, we want to, we want to provide it.
Can't park there? I mean, is there not?
Yeah, I mean, we're, 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 we're like maxed out. We don't have.
That's what I'm saying, increase, increase it to where, you know, those who absolutely need it, which would be the, you know, would be. And wouldn't be just a cheap parking place.
We have forty, forty-three permits that are out right now, so there's forty-three vehicles out there that can park at the airport.
Yeah, and most of them are people that don't have a hangar here. They fly in, you know, they put their airport, they put their plane in the transient, but they want their car there. And it's in the grass. I mean, it's not, there's no fence. I mean, it's pretty bare bones, but. It's probably, I wonder what the cost would be if you went to one of the storage facilities and said, you know, what's my? You know, how much do I pay to keep a car in a?
Yeah.
Storage facility.
Yeah.
It'd be how much?
So this is inexpensive parking.
Yeah, this is like.
If you get a plane, it's hundred fifty.
So it seems like we need to look at that a little bit deeper.
Yeah.
Parking lots.
Information on the boat slips.
Yeah, because I mean, with just the tail number association, it could be virtually anyone. I could use Chris Shanklin's tail number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a, need a storage hundred bucks, so.
I kind of agree with Kelly that, you know, maybe this is something we need to.
Maybe table this.
Yeah.
Or you could increase the fee now and then come back and change and we can always, right, I mean, not that you want to go through that over and over again, right?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think three hundred sixty-five dollars or, you know, basically a dollar a day would be realistic, but again, just my thought.
I'm good with that. Anybody else have thoughts about that?
It needs to be more. I would agree, but like you said, it is completely unapproved parking. It's a big lot.
Yeah, well, yeah, except it's full.
Yeah. So then what? You go up to five bucks a day and maybe people don't use it for a convenient place to park. I don't think.
So they, they are required to have a one-year? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they get a one-year, they get a one-year pass.
Yeah, they're not here.
Okay.
So Kelly, you're.
I'll take your recommendation, babe.
I mean, I, like I said, I just. Sixty-five, but I mean, I'm good with.
A buck a day.
I would, but I mean, Kelly had recommended five hundred and I mean. It's still cheap.
It still is cheap.
Want me to go find out what it costs to store a vehicle and some storage units around town?
Oh, I can tell you, Kelly's pretty spot on.
It's about a hundred and fifty, I think, a month.
But that's in a storage unit.
Yeah.
I mean, this is in an open parking lot. We're putting in parking right here too, so.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna bring that back to you this fall about that, but, yeah, alright, so.
Then I propose that um, we change it to five hundred.
Okay. So then we're gonna adopt the amendment to the fee schedule. With the parking fee of five hundred, the floating dock fee for a thousand per quarter and then the parks and recs fees as stated.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Right, so a sec.
A second.
Okay. Discussion. Fran, please call the rules.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
You're one. Yes. Item K, presentation and general discussion from Broxen Associates on Hurricane Harvey recovery. I see Michael coming to.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
Some updates for you uh, on some of the projects. Um, all in all, things are staying on. Schedule, the Ansel Brondret. Schedule, the Ansel Brondret. Pier, we're shooting for September twentieth, the week of that. Uh, we were able to resolve some of those uh, things just this week. Uh, Roberts Point, we're working with Urban and his team uh, to get Derek some of the information, but it's moving along. Um, Charlie's pastor pier, the materials and everything still show the end of the year, January completion as we anticipated. Uh, Bulkhead, we're moving along. We did have a very good meeting with FEMA on an additional two thousand cubic yards of fill. Uh, behind the sidewalks, so we were able to get that Monday. Public safety is in.
Michael, is that ju- is that behind the, the brake area or is that just behind the bulkhead in general?
No, so the, the two thousand fifty-five uh, cubic yards is. Around that area before the blowout.
Okay, so it's, right, okay, so it's, it's gonna be, it's in this, this area here.
Yes, sir.
It's all behind, yeah, okay.
Correct, where we mitigated the sidewalks and raised them up and then behind the blowout, uh, that's where we got. Twenty-four to twenty-five thousand cubic yards uh, from FEMA, but we have the arbitration to completely fill it in.
Will that be enough to at least get the path back? Or does that not get us back to the path still?
We're working with GLO to make sure that gives us enough. I, I am.
I know GLO needs enough just to drive by to do their work.
Carry that heavy revetment. Yes, sir. And I am telling FEMA since they denied behind that twenty-four thousand that. With the weight and stuff, they need to. Ship that revetment in instead of hauling across.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Public safety, uh, we're doing the floor plan review ongoing. Um, that, that's moving along. The fire station is hovering around fifty percent design at this point. Um, public works. We sent a lot of information. We started back in May working with them to try to get that to an at cost and. Not have the same delays of the appeal process. Uh, we talked to them this week. It looks like next week we'll have a working meeting, but that one's progressing uh, along as an at call. At cost project. The nature preserve and boardwalk raid did come to me with a couple of ruts off the mat. I spoke to the contractor. We have addressed that. Um, they've been smoothed out and informed to stay on the mats. That substantial completion is October. Things are progressing along very well. Um, Harbor Master, we got the AIA contract, the, the stuff for under review. Um. Gas distribution, we're about sixty days from the material showing up on site, so we're getting past that peak season. We're kind of looking at everything and delivery dates. It looks like in the next sixty days, we'll see a bulk of material starting to arrive. Yeah, I figured they would. Uh, that's a twenty-two million dollar project, so that is going to increase activity um, down here. And the high pressure, excuse me, um, it's punch lists, a couple loose end items, so that's seven million dollar job. We're, we're relying on that high pressure line at this point. Any questions?
Uh, one thing, Mike, on, on the fire, we've, I've been working with the fire department on their. La- on the ladder truck clearances on different slopes and grades. And we kind of discovered that we think what we can do is have um, EMS. To be, have all their stuff pull through from the back alley towards ninth, and then we think we can. With what we discovered, we think we can put the fire station and rotate it ninety degrees from what it is now. And we think that we can have everything pull through. At least maybe for the bigger fire station base.
Okay.
So I'll get with you tomorrow on that, but we think we can do pull-throughs for everything.
And that would put that bid alternate bay right there on that end, right?
Uh, yeah, right here.
Yep, okay, cool.
Yeah.
That's, that's good news.
I'll get with you tomorrow.
And I assume that, I mean, as well, public safety as well as firing EMS, we're working with our guys to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've been, Daniel's been working, getting pull-throughs for EMS and his crews and then getting.
Yeah, there's been close coordination on what FEMA and the claim is and the appeal approach is and what the growth and allowable. Uh, plan of the city is.
Yes, sir. Alright, cause I just make sure these guys are taken care of.
That. Nice fire station.
Alright.
Anything else for Michael?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Alright, item L. General discussion on the roles, duties of mayor, council and city manager per the Port Aransas City Charter.
Okay, I'll, Francesca.
Can you come up here?
So M and N. We're speaking with Francesca and she was suggesting maybe.
M and N or L and M?
I mean.
Ellen, okay, sorry.
Doing. You were suggesting maybe that we get something put together.
Well, you have two items. Are you discussing M or are you discussing?
Both of them.
Right now we're on L.
Right now, okay, yeah. So maybe put in a, not a workshop or uh.
Sure. We can do a workshop. Um, I, I know Council Kruger, Councilmember Kruger has come to me and asked that maybe we go with the roles and duties of. Each, the council member, mayor, city manager. Uh, previously we put on like a little workshop for some of the council members when we brought in the attorney and kind of went over. The city council roles and as a whole, um, do's, don'ts, and any kind of questions that y'all have. So if that's something that y'all would like to do, we can definitely schedule a workshop. If everyone's gonna be here, it has to be in a meeting, just post seventy-two hour notice. So if that's something that you'd like to do, we can definitely do something like that.
And we were also talking about maybe writing, putting something together. That every new council, if new council members come on, everything's the same. I mean, you know.
Kind of like a um, training, you know, like an academy. We, I think it was like in the little city council member academy where. They get all the updates and, you know, as far as what their job duties are concerned, you know, what they're gonna do for their job as a city council member. I do provide a packet, a newly elected official's packet, so a lot of that information is in there, but sometimes when you're just reading and going through it. You don't really, you know, it kind of gets lost through in translation sometimes, so it's easier to have, be here in a setting and to do it. So I, I'm willing to do that and have Roxanne here to help us and um, just let me know what y'all want me to do.
So are you looking for, are you suggesting that we need like some kind of mini TML training before people take on their role? Or what is?
Well, it's just, you know, when we came on, we weren't really um. You know, when you come to voting, uh, which is gonna be in the end.
Okay.
Um, how it's actually processed, you know? And so it's just be a little guide that everybody's on the same page, like the previous council, they're, they're, know what they're doing and everything. So when the other ones come on, they can just uh, read it. Uh, know the roles, know everybody else's roles. Um, so just something pretty simple.
Okay. Whatever we can figure out.
And it would definitely be in a workshop, a workshop session, so you'd be able to really discuss. Um, I know whenever I did the workshop with uh, Councilmember Kruger and Councilmember Seeloff and Councilmember Park. We did, we went over like iCompass, you know, how to use iCompass, how to use, you know, the um, your email and. And finding ordinances on the city website and just kind of different things like that.
Yeah, and Mike Morse was there and then, you know, cause he told us at that time, we didn't really use Robert's rules and, you know, things like that. So uh.
Well, that's not a good idea.
No, it's not, so um.
Well, we technically don't. We uh.
Yeah.
So, so when you, when you, when you look at what you guys are discussing, it's in the charter.
Right.
And it says, in the charter, it says, under city council.
Right.
Thirteen dot one-one, rules of procedure. The city council shall by ordinance determine its own rules and order of business, and the rules should be provided that citizens of the city shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard. Blah, blah, blah. So the city council shall provide the minutes, the, everything that you guys are talking about. If you go to chapter two in our ordinances. It talks about article two, chapter two, administration, city council. General contents of agenda, meetings, dates, time, public broadcasting, conducted meetings. Mayor's chairperson obtaining the floor, conducting business, making motions.
Get everything.
Uh, everything's in there. So I mean, that's your guys' ordinances, reading amendments. You know, so it's, it is spelled out, so I mean, it's, it's in your, it's currently already codified.
So you, you.
I'm not looking to uh, change any ordinance or make an ordinance or anything. I just thought it'd be helpful. For everybody to be on the same page and know what we're doing.
Do you feel like we're not on the same page right now?
Uh, no. When it came with the voting, because we did it a different way and then, oh, yeah.
But I think, I think with, with voting, I think there's a, there's a whole bunch of ways to skin a cat. Um. You know, you could, you could vote by.
For six years.
Yeah, you can vote by. Sneaker ballot.
One year's experience, so I think, you know.
But there's not just one way to vote.
Well, we vote and then.
It's by motion and, motion and majority.
No, okay, no. We'll just leave it like that, man. I mean.
I'm, I'm just curious. I'm, I'm new here, so no. But the, the voting process in general, the way we follow rules of the agenda, there is a process for that. I mean, we do have to follow that process, so. Yes, that's, that's, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna follow the process. We're gonna be efficient. We're gonna do things.
So we're gonna go by two, is it two dash eighteen, two dash nineteen, two dash eighteen? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you feel like we need some kind of workshop for people to kind of continue to learn their roles, then I think that's up to individuals who want to participate. I'm not opposed to having a workshop, you know, but I mean, I think it is important when any new council member steps in this position. That they should read that book that's this way, because it has everything you need to know.
And it is just got a lot of take ones either. And I learned a lot more when we went to our.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sign it up for TML.
I, and yeah, no, I. A whole lot.
Okay, so if Friday's good with that, then.
But if you think that's new now, council members need that.
I'm here to help in any way, so if y'all want a workshop, workshop or anything like that, please let me know and I can.
Okay, thank you. You're very.
Thank you, as always.
Okay, item M, general discussion on appointing members to city boards and commissions.
We kind of just went over all that, so we're just gonna go on.
Okay, okay. Alright, item N. Discuss and take possible action on the cross street banner on the location of Alistair and Connor.
Maybe the chamber wants to, I, I, I know I'm throwing you under the bus there, but, okay, so, so we got a call about two weeks ago. Um, I, you know, I don't know if, who, I don't remember who it was, a five oh one C three, but someone said. Hey, you know, when you drive through Schulenburg, it says, you know, the strawberry festival, blah, 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 or you drive through.
Luling.
Luling and, and they have these cross street, we used to have one.
Hummingbird.
Yes, the Hummerbird.
Yeah.
And Rockford.
And Whooping Crane.
We haven't heard that, yeah.
So uh. So I would, I just said to the person, I said, let me take it to council. We used to have one in the past, but I think. It needs some input from the chamber. We don't want, you know, happy birthday, Dave. Or whatever, you know, we, we, we want it to be for.
For no advertising.
You guys want some rules associated with it.
Yeah.
So that it's, you know, it's, it's for like, you know, do you want fishing tournaments? Do you want only five oh one C? You know, what do you guys want? So, so if you guys are interested in it, I will take it back and. Work with the chamber and some other groups and figure out and bring it back to you guys and say, here's some good locations. Uh, here maybe are some rules of who can and can't put up banners.
I, I think.
Is that something you're interested in?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's nice. I think there's some information and, you know.
Yeah, I'll bring it back.
Might be two months. Yeah. Discuss, who's gonna be responsible for taking them down, so that like, the strawberry festival in May is still not up out there.
Yeah, alright, so I'll bring something back to you guys on that. Okay.
Okay. Alright, item O, resolution designated and appointing two city council members, city manager David Parsons. City secretary Francesca Nixon and director of planning and development Rick Adams as signators to the city's depository American bank. And directing the city secretary to afford a certified copy of this resolution to the finance director for submittal to the above named depository.
So the last two were Bruce and.
Mayor.
Bruce and Mayor Bouillon.
So can I just make a motion to appoint somebody?
Well, I think.
Mayor, do we need to discuss it?
Uh, and we don't have to discuss it, but the charter, correct me if I'm wrong, reads that typically the mayor and the mayor pro tem who sign in those two extra spots. Um, I'm not going to sign on behalf of the city. I did not sign when I was mayor pro tem. So I think that, I mean, I don't know what your recommendation is, but I think I would.
Yeah, we need, we need the staffers, cause we're signing stuff daily and then we need the city. You know, whoever wants to.
It says um, so is the charter that has to be the mayor pro tem and the.
That's the, yes, that's what we followed in the past, and that's why it was. It was supposed to be, like I said, it was Charles and then it was supposed to be me as mayor pro tem, but I declined.
Right, and it went to Bruce.
And then they re-selected Bruce.
I got you. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint the mayor pro tem, Kelly Owens and Tim Parks.
Including the current other three, correct? We need to have everybody in the motion.
Sorry.
It's okay, just make sure we have all five people in the motion.
And um. Uh, city manager Dave Parsons, city secretary Francesca Nixon and director of planning and development Rick Adams as signatures. To the city depository and Tim Parks and Kelly Owens.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
We have it in Billings.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, says Chambers, so she's.
Alright, P. Discuss and take possible action on beach access road one B. I will say, just, I mean, I don't know. Who put this on the agenda, but um.
I did it on land of the West Council meeting, I guess basically one two weeks.
You wanted an update?
Yeah, I just wanted an update to discuss this. I've specifically gone around and I've looked at other beach roads. I called David, discussed it. I've looked at, uh, for example, beach road two is consists of two ten-foot lanes. Uh, with no sidewalks, no shoulders. Uh, and it has similar, in my opinion, I asked Dave to get some specifics on the heights of the dunes to compare them. Again, by my non-surveror eye, they look very similar, it's not comparable to them, so. Uh, wanted to know what the current thoughts are on that road and also if there are any intrusions on our easement currently.
Um, I will say that the subcommittee is still actively looking and exploring. The things that we were passed to do. We have not had a chance to have another meeting because of vacations and personal things. But we do have one scheduled in the near future, so I don't want to jeopardize any of those negotiations. Um.
What can you say in public, I guess?
I, I totally agree, but we, since it has been an executive session.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. I, I didn't want to get any more specific.
Keep that in executive session, and if we need to wait next month and have an executive session and discuss that, then.
Can we go now in the executive session?
We can't go now?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's get on the agenda, be done, that we're able to go into an executive session for any items listed above.
Do, we want to come back? Can we come back to it and let, get, push it further down?
Yeah, put it at the end maybe, and then we don't have to have people come and wait. If that's possible. What else do we have?
We have uh, the preservation.
Oh, yeah.
You want to do them first and then.
Can we do them first?
And do that?
Yep.
We can do that, okay?
There you go, good idea.
Then we're going to postpone an executive session right before staff reports. And we're gonna go on to item Q, which is presentation and general discussion. From the Port Aransas Preservation and Historical Association and the Port Aransas Community Theater on fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three funding request. And looks like we already had the preservation.
We're gonna go ahead and go.
So you're gonna go.
We're ready.
Yeah.
You're ready. We've got some more meetings later, so we figured we'd go ahead and go.
Alright.
Alright, if those of you don't know, I'm Ashley Harris, Port Aransas Preservation Historical Association, and we were asked to give a presentation. Um, we didn't have a whole lot of time last time, so this is gonna hopefully clarify some things. We were asked, what's gonna happen? If we don't receive um, the amount that we requested, so um, let's just get started with um.
And what I requested was.
Three hundred thousand.
And the current is fifty, correct?
We received fifty thousand last year. That was the first time we had ever received funds from co talk and see texts. That's okay. Um, you said the top, okay. Um, first slide, we need to point out that I misspelled Aransas. I went to Port Rans High School. Your teachers are so ashamed of you right now. They've gotten better. They're getting better. Um, who we are, next slide there.
No.
You can do it.
It's not going.
We'll go on to the next page since y'all have it. Uh, who we are, the Porterance Preservation Historical Association is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that umbrellas are four entities. Porterance is a historical museum and we now have a Mercer Market and the Old Museum. Uh, Farley Boat Works, the preser, the preserve at Farley Boat Works, which is our new maritime museum and event space. And we are the Chapel and the Dunes liaison, so we run all the tours for the chapel and the dunes. Our mission is to promote interest and participation in the preservation of Porterance's history, environment and ambiance. Since our founding in two thousand two, we have accomplished several milestones, including the opening of the Porterance Museum in two thousand eight and the revitalization of the Farley Boat Works in two thousand eleven. As leaders in our community, we are looking to continue our efforts in promoting the unique history and culture of our island. We're thrilled to present our newest space, the Preserve at Farley Boat Works. This dynamic space is designed to benefit our community and its visitors by providing a multifunctional center for events, education and enjoyment. So we hope that you embark on this exciting new adventure with us. I wanted to showcase our events. Um, we're gonna start with the fall events, cause either, these are the ones that are coming up. Four day surf fest is gonna be September twenty fourth, two thousand two. Um, over the last few years, they've been doing Old Town Fest, which was a combination of a surf contest, storytelling parade. All these different things were going on. We don't have a big, we don't, we only have the two employees and we don't have a big board, so. We weren't able to be in all those places. So we separated them out. We're doing the surf contest on September twenty fourth. Um, it's gonna have an after party and street dance on Brindrette that evening, so it's a one day event that everyone can participate in. Wooden Boat Festival is gonna be October twenty first through twenty third. That used to also have a parade. Got rid of that. We're gonna strictly be at Roberts Point Park, so we hope the pavilion's not torn down by then. Wink, wink. Um, so that's gonna showcase fifty plus boats. We have people come from all over the United States, Canada, that bring their works of art. They showcase them. We have vendors, food trucks, live music, that's Friday night, Saturday night, and they've launched their family boat builds on Sunday. And that's where four teams come. They're all from out of town. They come, they stay a few days and they. Uh, it's a contest to build those four boats and then they're launched on Sunday. Our next one is we are bringing back Port A Days, which is replacing the Old Town Festival. And that is going to be a Friday night kickoff, which is a champagne cruise that was always traditionally done at the Scat Cat. Um, that's gonna happen and then Saturday is an all day event, starting with a parade, leading to the park. There's gonna be kids activities. We're gonna make sure that all the Porterans children get to go for free and that it's gonna be open to the public and encouraged for visitors to attend. Our spring events, we have the Farley Classic, which is our master's theme golf tournament, annual fundraising gala and the tarp and run. All of those events bring in a lot of out of town visitors. Our next slide is our summary total annual income. I know a lot of y'all asked about some of our financials, so we put this slide in there. Um, I wanted to make some notes, um, events. That's what we spend. That doesn't reflect our upcoming events, but that's what we spent last year on events and most of that is for out of town visitors. Uh, the next slide, we have a list of things of cost, estimated cost. Of things that we've done in the past, but we haven't been able to continue to do or we're struggling to do because of the building of the Maritime Museum. So you'll see a lot of different items in there. Um, the Farley Boat Works, even though it's still standing after Harvey, does not mean that it doesn't have needs. And maintenance upkeep, which those have been put on the back burner. Um, Polians Museum, hundred and twenty year old building. It's got a lot of maintenance. Um, additional salaries. We have no boat instructor. That means that yours truly is at Farley Boat Works every day. With Pete. Um, we have um, advertising needs. We do work with the Chamber of Commerce and they've been very helpful, but we have a lot of advertisement needs for event signage. Billboards, I believe Patricia is the one who requested the signs to be hung across the street, Patricia Tenon. And that would be for like Old Town Festival, Port A Days. I know we don't wanna probably have them up. Year round with all the events that Port A has going on, but maybe one or two of those would be good. Um, we need to do the, our historic home tour. It's been requested by a lot of different museums in Texas. Um, and we just haven't been able to do that. Uh, the cost of that is sixty five hundred dollars. Uh, winter Texans activities. We um, basically run, we joke about an adult daycare. So our winter Texans spend a lot of time at Farley Boat Works and um, and their wives want them to be there. And it's fun. And um, we use a lot of money on coffee and tool upkeep. And um, we do lecture series for all the winter Texans. We have second Saturdays for the winter Texans. And we don't charge fees for any of those activities. You know, they get to come eat, um, have snacks, drinks, you know, depending on what it is. Um, Mercer Cemetery is not in good shape. That's something that really bothers us. So I guess when we asked, which y'all said, what's not gonna happen, we're, we've kinda got a cost here of things that, you know, with our budget right now. Some of that's not gonna happen. We're never gonna turn our winter Texans away, but you know, just to give you an idea of cost. Uh, the next graph I built off of um, data dot texas dot gov. These are surrounding areas and what they've put towards historical project percentages and historic project revenues. Um, some of them I know are very high, but these are kind of an explanation of, you know. Just for example, League City, they had like a one time project where one year they gave a huge amount, just to kinda get that space going for, for visitors. The next slide is very important to me. I'm gonna go ahead and read it out. It's from statues dot capital dot texas dot gov. Subchapter B, use and allocation of revenue section. Three fifty one point one oh one, use of tax revenue. Number five of that specifically states, historical restoration and preservation and preservation projects or activities or advertising into conducting. Solicitations and promotional programs to encourage tourists and convention delegates to visit preserved historical sites or museums. A, at or in the immediate vicinity of convention center facilities or visitor information centers. B, located elsewhere in the municipality or its vicinity that would be frequented by visitors and convention delegates. We are the only organization that falls in that category. And I feel like that's very important to recognize. The next slide is um, just showing, showcasing our partnership with uh, K R I S, Channel Six and Corpus. I started in the spring a corporate team building workshop at Farley Boat Works and they were the first people to come and do it. They had a great experience. And so they've been, you know, involved us in a lot of things. I don't know if any of y'all have seen Summer Forty Two, it was put on last week. Great documentary, Cliff Strain and Greg Smith were both huge parts of that. And K R I S um, has been great with, with our organization. They came back after and they built two more boats and took those home with them. They also came back and donated a webcam to us. And that webcam is like a bird's eye view. It'll go on the top of the Maritime Museum and that'll be referred to daily. Throughout their whole news programs. Every program they'll say, I don't know if y'all have seen their other ones, where it's kind of the. Bird's eye view Snoopy's or wherever. So they're gonna say, the preserve at Farley Boat Works in Porterance, Texas is looking like this today. You can see the channel, you can see the harbor. I mean, it's, it's the whole thing. Um, you don't get much better view than that. Um, next slide, I inserted a video and I don't know if that'll work or not. No? Okay. No sound. Yeah, that's okay.
Good one.
I've seen. It's a great video. So if y'all will, I, I'll, well, Francesca, you've got this. If you wanna forward it to all of them, they can watch it later this evening. It's um, very great video and um, it was put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and it's just. It's a really emotional video. It's really important. And I feel like it's. It's important that it was showcased at the summit of the Chamber of Commerce, because that just shows, you know, the heart and soul of Porterance's. Um, the next slide is this one, publications in the last year that include Porterance's Museum. Farley Boat Works and Chapel and the Dunes. Uh, we were featured in many uh, magazines and then we also had Waypoint TV come out to Farley Boat Works. Film one of the last boats that was launched and it's gonna be on a show called Stomping Grounds. So that's a really cool thing. Southern Living, Small Boat Magazine does all of our launches, Wooden Boat and Boat Trader. Next page is publications across Texas. So we're bringing in a lot of visitors through Texas, Authentic Texas, Texas Monthly, Texas Highways, Austin Chronicle. And there's more on the following page, uh, San My Say, Dallas, Atlas Obscura and Fine Art America. And then I just followed it up with a lot of photos from our different events. We held a tarp and run last year. It was. Highly successful. A lot of people want to return. The master's themed golf tournament. Extremely successful. Our gala is a themed event every year, so people dress in costume. Um, and this last year it was Elmar Rancho, which was based on the eighteen fifty three settlement from the Mercer family. Um, surf contest. Our three most recent boat launches. So we've got Fish Tales, Blackbird, and then Gene Grant just rolled his out to Premier Yamaha to get powered. So those are the kind of boats that we're building. You know, daily. And then our Wooden Boat Festival photos. I have one more thing to read to you. I know it's been a lot, but um, Cliff couldn't be here. He's on his last day of quarantine from having COVID. So he would like me to read this. I'm so sorry I could not be here due to COVID protocols. Ashley Harris has laid out many benefits Pafa provides the community and visitors of our town. And our plans to do much more. We are a small group working hard to create meaningful activities and events that share and celebrate our town's heritage. With the funding, we can focus on the development and promotion of these activities. The Preservation Association provides unique opportunities for tourists to immerse themselves in the culture and history of Porterance's. To give you an idea of our impact on tourists, I wanted to share with you a comment from a young couple from East Africa, visiting the museum a week ago. At the end of their visit, the man said, you Porterance's people are so wonderful. You have made us feel at home like family. I said, that is our intention and that, that many nice people live here. He then said, it inspires me to come back with family and tell my friends to do so as well. Isn't this the kind of inspiration we wanna create with our hot funds? That's from Cliff Strain. And then I also wanted to say a couple quotes from y'all. I wanna preserve all the things that are dearly loved here. Fishing, ecosystem, beaches, old town, our businesses and everything that drew us all here have kept us here. Tanya Chambers. I want to preserve the uniqueness that has made Port A such a wonderful place. Del Christensen. I am dedicated to preserving the legacy and history of the Porterance's we have all fallen in love with. Ellie Owens. We need to protect our heritage. I believe in bringing a responsible, balanced government that preserves our history and plans for our future. Any more. Protecting Port A's charm and character. Tim Park. I have proven myself as making preservation a priority. Joelle Krueger. I'm sorry, Mr. Sealoff, I did not have yours. Protecting the environment, yeah. Thank you, Ashley. You did a great job.
We can discuss each one after.
Why don't you come up and do your spill real quick and then we'll.
Everybody, and I know I've spoke to at the prior meetings and I've written emails to you and thank you so much for being receptive. Um, my name's Veronica Stewart. I am here on behalf of Porterance's Community Theater. And um, like Ashley, I too am asking for some money. Um, um, and we are requesting an increase from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand this year. Um, from additional uh, hot tax funds. Um, as we all know, Porterance's has seen record growth and uh. We're on track for a record year. And um, asking for you to look into increasing that funding so we can invest in our community theater. And, you know, the arts are a sound investment in our creativity and social health and economic well being for our community. And um, we want people to have one more reason to come and stay in Porterance's. And Porterance is becoming a destination and our theater programming is continuously changing. Our board is trying to work with the cyclical um, tourism, you know, we, we are working to program. The right things for the winter tourists versus our summer tourists. We're also working on increasing educational programs. Um, we have um, partnered with the chamber. To work and we're working on our advertising and marketing. We have had a, a great increase in um, invisibility. And those, you know, I, I gave um, a small presentation with those numbers previously. Um. Yeah, as you know, with that last fund, we're grateful. Um, a, a large chunk of the funds were, went to advertising and marketing. The other half went to getting um, having a higher. Quality of show. I mean, the rights to those, especially musicals is, is expensive, not to mention maintenance upkeep, you know. Everything is um, increasing in cost, you know, cost of doing business. Um. Um, so as you, you know, this past year you saw Little Shop of Horrors, Grumpy Old Men, Laramie Project, Little Mermaid, and out of Little Mermaid, nine of the twelve shows were sold out. Um, we also have our lecture series. We had Deep in the Heart, which was a, a, um, a movie actually being shown in the theater at the same time. As we were able to um, to show it here, which was nice. I mean, it's, as a parent in this town. I like to be able to take my kids to family events. I mean, we love the beach and I like fishing. But we, we, we need some more opportunities and that's what the theater is trying to bring and we are, as the board, we are working. On, on trying to piece our calendar to fit as much as possible for everyone. Um, in the, for the future, we are looking at this additional money. To help with br, bringing, bringing in more arts. We are now becoming known and people are, are seeking us. Um, to actually direct, um, people with more, you know, a little bit higher caliber talent in some respects or, you know, we got the. Little Mermaid was directed by one of the professors from Texas A and M Corpus Christi. You know, they're out for the summer and she brought talent and we had a great show. So the intention of asking for increased funding will be to. To bring more to, for all of us and to bring more people in. There were, um, as I sat in the theater uh, during Deep in the Heart, I listened to people who had never been in our theater and weren't in from out of town. We had an increase of people who came into Porterance's to see Little Mermaid. Um, whether it was to see one of, you know, somebody in the talent or they saw their Little Mermaid was here and their family was gonna be here and they adjusted their schedules. So, um, so as, as I said before, I'm just requesting an increase in um, in the funding. Um, and we will do some great things with that. We are, we have some great plans and I'm always happy to share more and take questions if you have any. Okay. Thank you.
What's your current budget and income?
Well, are you talking about all total?
Yeah.
Oh.
I just wonder how much of it is from the city directly, that's all.
Well, the last, uh, last year we received fifty thousand from the hot tax allocation and we're asking for a hundred. Um, I don't have all the numbers, although I was meeting and I'm the secretary. I mean, I don't, I know what we have, but I mean, I don't know what to disclose, you know? Um, but that's what we received.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Y'all have a nice day.
So at this time is when we would adjust, or would we take action on adjusting that at the budget line item for numbers S? If we want.
I would say.
Okay, that's what I thought. Does anybody have any other questions in general? Regarding those two groups?
I don't have any questions, but.
I, I got a question.
Okay.
Um. And I guess I, I could pose it to both groups. Um, last year you received fifty thousand, this year you're asking uh, for three hundred thousand. Is this a one time ask? Or is this number gonna be six hundred thousand next year? Or is this, is three hundred your new? Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, I, i- is this a one time bump ask that you're asking for, or is this a, or is this a? Or is this a one time, is it a one time ask and we can revert back to fifty or? I think council needs to know that and the same with, same with the theater. Is this a, is this a one time ask or is this a? Is this the new, new level or, or next year you plan on coming back to one fifty or two hundred thousand?
And I think to his point, Ashley, like for the list that you provided, which we just looked at, reviewed, I mean, you know, a lot of these items. Seem like maybe they were one time expenses, you know, you would need to fix the drainage, you need to fix the roof, you need to fix some, you know, some brick and mortar. you know, a lot of these items seem like maybe they were one-time expenses. You know, you would need to fix the drainage. You need to fix the roof. You need to fix some, you know, some brick and mortar issues.
With the building, with what's been going on, we're just kind of not in that situation. Moving forward, I do feel like our percentage should be a little bit higher than fifty thousand purely just because we have three brick and mortars. And we throw so many events throughout here. I mean, I think that should be adjusted, but as far as a one-time, I think that we need to think about that and how much it's going to cost to get it. You know, where we need to be.
And I think, you know, they are uniquely Porter Anzus. So you can use that quote.
Yeah, they are.
What, what about the theater? Same question Dave has. I mean.
Let me talk about that. Uh, for right now, you know, I don't want to blow off the opportunity, but I mean, this was a point I'm at to my.
Oh, true.
No, we discussed.
Okay, so we had discussed this question. Um, for right now, it is a one-time ask. Of course, I don't want to say like, I don't want to, you know, shut the doors on asking next year, but no, that is, the intention was to make the investment and do some great things this year. This year um, is looking to be a great year to ask. And uh, we will, you know, we, we've, we've proven that we are good stewards of the money and we will continue to keep working on it. And so.
And did you guys provide us a balance sheet two months ago?
I'd have to go look and I didn't.
Because that's something I think, I think that I, I mean, one thing I think we need is, is we, we do need to see your balance sheet of I, I think, and just from a city manager point of view, I mean, and council can speak for themselves, but you know, right now, or prior to the fifty thousand, you guys busted your butt to make ends meet. And I think the purpose of the money shouldn't be that you have to stop all that hard work. I think that should be um, you guys should still be working as hard as you can to raise funds. And I think we need to, we need to see your numbers. I mean, you guys generate good ticket sales. And you know, I think that council should see what you're putting out a year for um, all your productions and, and your, your expenses and what you're bringing in. Um, so they.
Do they have a time limit? Do I need to get that to you?
Um, I think that if you could get it to me, I could, I could get it out to them. I mean, the final budget decision isn't until
Couple weeks.
September seventh, I believe. So.
Cause last year when.
September eight.
You know, put this out last year for fifty thousand for each organization. You all, part of it was to report back.
Yes.
The usage of it and.
I would have to go back and see what I.
Financials and stuff.
All the data and, you know, and and, and part of the, you know, additional funds is to actually pay for those additional rights to higher caliber shows. So I mean that, I mean, so yeah, so I just, just so you understand, it's not the same portioning. It, we're, we're paying for bigger rights to get bigger name shows out here, but absolutely. I will gladly work on getting that to y'all and.
I do have a question. So like when you put on like the Little Mermaid, I know that's a well-known and it's, I mean, so how much does something like that cost for you to get the rights and then, because I know it costs more than some.
I do not know that. But I do know that Disney is a lot more.
Yeah, it could be ten grand, I think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, but yes.
Yeah.
We can definitely get you those, that, that information.
Make, make sure you include your fundraising on that too. So we can see what you guys are attempting to bring in fundraising.
Absolutely. Okay. Before September eighth, correct?
Yeah, the sooner the better.
You got it.
Yeah, because I think we requested that last year that if we did go up with the funds.
If you remember from like, it was five or whatever, and then we updated to fifty, we just said, hey, can you show us what you did with the money?
Yeah.
How it was spent. I'm thinking we showed you, but I.
No. Last year than I was the year before.
I will make sure y'all get it. Thank you.
Well, and I'm sure with COVID, they weren't able to do any productions. You guys, you know, weren't able to do a lot of your fundraisers. So I would think that some of it is, you know, trying to make up for some lost revenue in that time.
What about, cause the art center, did they? They, they have enough fifty to a hundred as well?
No, they don't. They stayed at fifty.
But I think they just got their fifty from last year recently, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure when they got.
So my, so I mean, this is nothing against any of the nonprofits. I mean, I think they're all personal organizations, but we have some heavy lifts that we're looking at. Um, you know, additional parking, um, you know, redoing the civic center. Um, possibly new Marina in the future. Uh, I mean, there's, I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars probably over the next ten years. Just, that's my guess, but you know, I except nothing against these organizations, but we do have some heavy lists we're looking at. Um. So I just think that these be part of our conversation.
Right. But I think these are very important to our community and I'm, I know, I know, but I'm just stating my.
Was, was it the council's intent last year to do this on an annual basis to start funding them to a certain amount annually? Whenever y'all discussed it or was.
Personally, I can tell you, we just wanted to see, okay, let's do this. Let's see, because like Tim said, every one of these is worthy organization. Every one of them provides a lot of Porter Anzus. Every one of them I want to see grow. But you know, we just don't want to give some dollars and then not see the output of. I think as far as I, you know, my, my thought behind last year was, hey, we're coming out of COVID.
That's exactly what it.
You know, these organizations meet this state requirements. You know, let's give them a bump to, you know.
They were, they couldn't fundraise or.
Yeah, moving forward. Um, so, uh, I think it was just uh, experimental, let's kind of see how things go. Um, I don't think there was any, at least on my part, there was any intention of it, uh, of the permanency of it. Um, I think it was just to kind of see how things went and then as new council comes in, discuss it, you know. But as the historical society indicated, you look at some of the funding that other cities give and yeah, absolutely. There's, you know, not a comparison on a lot of them, but yeah, they, they do, they do put, they do put funding toward these. Yeah. Oh, no. Organizations. I have nothing, I mean, I support all these organizations. I mean.
Yeah.
It's, so it's nothing against, I think this is something that we need to keep in our conversation, you know.
Yeah.
A- as we look to future projects in the city that, you know, are recipients of hot tax funding.
So Mayor Moore, we don't need to vote on anything tonight. This is just all discussion or?
I, I believe it's absolutely discussion. If we want to make a change, an adjustment to the budget, there is an opportunity to do that in item S. But if we are requesting additional information, then I would suggest that we not make those decisions until the next meeting, but that, that's up to you guys. I, I agree that I think that all three are very worthy organizations. I think we have a lot of amazing nonprofits in this community. And to Dave's point, a lot of them work very hard to fundraise because they don't have any, fundraising is their only source of income, period. Um, some of them have full-time staff, some of them do not. I think we have an incredibly generous community that gives so much money to so many different nonprofits, and that's why we're so unique and special. Um, there is allocation within the municipal or the state ordinances, the laws to provide for these organizations. I do not deny that, and I would not want to not provide that to these organizations. I think that going forward, if we're going to continue a pattern of doing this, and I, and I don't, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. I would like to see a mechanism, um, some kind of structured uh, matrix, uh, formula, application process so that we as council, whether it's the seven of us or seven different people in five years, have some kind of rule to go by. So that it's, you know, um, it's not fifty, a hundred, three hundred, twenty-five, two million, uh, you know. I think a formula would be very helpful to these groups. So just to say, here's the criteria, here's the application. Do you meet, you know, these things? And this is how council, this will help council determine what percentage of that hot tax dollar you get in that particular fiscal year budget. Doesn't commit us to doing it, but it makes it a po, a, a path or a guide. Because for me, it's hard for me to say that I would want to give one group over the other. That's hard. That's a hard decision because they're worthy organizations. But um, we need to decide as a group, do we want to make these one-time adjustments? Do we want to make them annually? But if we do decide to go annually, I, I think, I think we don't commit to that until we have a process. That's mine.
I, I agree with.
Two cents on that. Because at the end of the day, the chamber, you know, has to, I mean, th- there are one big task. How do you put heads and beds, right? They have to account for their budget and every dollar they spend. So just like these other hot tax dollars, if we're going to give them out, then we need a mechanism to, for them to ask and for them to report back and it, it'd be transparent in that, you know, okay, yeah, great. You know, you met all the requirements, you met all the criteria. You qualify for this next year if you apply. It's my thought. I don't have that all formulated out, but I think we should have time to, you know, work on it in the next year. But in the meantime, that doesn't, you know, we can decide if we want to give them extra money, you know, whatever that money is above and beyond the fifty that we've already outlined for the budget. So.
And each budget does stand on its own for each year. So just because you commit something this year is not a guarantee that anybody, any city department does get it going forward. Because each, that's why you do an annual budget.
Right.
And to Dave's point as well, if you know, if we don't just, if these just keep going year by year, what happens if next year is a slow year, right? And the hot tax funds are reduced.
That's why.
The budget gets adjusted.
Yeah.
Budget will be just.
If we do like a percentage, like we've seen in some of the, then it would go, it would fluctuate with the year. If we had a good year, they would get more. If they had a bad year, then it would get less. Yeah, that's right. Like if you're saying, formulate some kind of, kind of formula.
Yes. If I can state something about that, like how we, we fund the chamber is on actual collection. So we set a budget number that the chamber is going to get an estimate of X in one year. But as we get the collections, we fund them three and a quarter percent of that actual collection. For these outside agencies, what we have done is said, we are going to fund them fifty thousand and we write a check of fifty thousand, no matter what our collections are. So if moving forward, it is going to be a matrix based on collections, that would be something to look at.
If. So some other cities do different things with how the money comes. So that, like Dave said, is everybody going to start coming up here asking for money? Is if we designate somebody to distribute those funds on behalf of the city, therefore working in conjunction with a chamber and a tourist bureau. You sort of block in, um. You know, you have some metrics there where actually other people are looking to see how can we track what these things are. I mean, heads and beds is one of the rules, but it's sort of a slang. And if you drill down to the nine things that or categories, preservation and histories in there, and then they list all the arts. Um. And I think those things do enhance the city other than just the beach, fishing, birding. I mean, we're starting to grow up a little so that um, we'd be able to have a mechanism where we do know it's not. I mean, when they're speaking, I'm thinking, okay, it's not the hot tax could be used for local to do stuff, but more as good stewards of that. It's for, and the whole gist of it in the statute going back is for tourists and people, visitors and things like that, where we take that same uh, look to see what can be added so that they do have an option. You know, if we had rain and the pack was had a show going on, they could have filled that thing multiple times, you know, so people sit there and go, hey, there's some cool stuff. So I, I mean, I'd use some of the leverage of what the chamber is already doing and promoting to help get the promotion and then have an accountability somewhere coming back. Um, and there's lots of different people who have written TML, you know, had an article, they spoke about it. The hotel uh, association has ways of putting things together so that it can actually guide us to see how much we want to adopt. Where it could be a percentage of something. I mean, nobody else is preserving the history and what we, we are. I mean, we hear about it all the time. At least we have some people that have stepped up.
And doing it.
And I'd like to, you know, be able to use some of that hotel tax.
I, I agree with you. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to gather more information. We're going to make a decision. Unless y'all want to make a decision now on S, item S, otherwise we'll do it before the final budget on the eighth.
I think we need that.
I want to see it. Yeah.
Okay. All right. On, on both or just the theater? Are we going to go ahead and just wait on both of the?
Sure. I think the historical society gave a pretty good overview. I think it's for the theater right now.
Yeah. They've got all the. I mean, I didn't mean more information because, yes, but just um, put off quoting on both. Okay, at the same time. Okay, okay. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to that item R. Discuss an action to set tax rate and date for public hearing.
So the proposed tax. Oh, sorry. Um, we do need to get an ad in the paper next week for our public hearing. And the calculation of the tax rates. And so what we are proposing is the tax rate that um, we have in the budget, which was the uh.
Point two, two, five, seven, eight, one.
Yes, point two, two, five, seven, eight, one. And so to advertise and have that public hearing set for September eighth, which is the night you'll have a public hearing on your budget on the tax rate in your vote. Um, we do need a record vote on that tax rate for the ad. And that tax rate does include the issuance of the tax anticipation notes for the fire department.
And Darla, what if there's, what if there's last minute tweaking on the, at the budget in, at the September meeting?
You cannot go above that.
Oh, right, right. You can't go above it, but you can, okay, right.
You could go below, but that is the maximum rate that you would ask.
So yeah, you can still adjust things.
Yeah, I'm saying correct, not.
Right, okay.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Maybe I spoke to.
Yes.
I make a motion to set the tax rate at point two, two, five, seven, eight, one. Okay.
A second.
All right, any discussion? Frank, call the roll.
Yes.
Captain Christensen?
Yes.
Captain LePard?
Yes.
Captain Chambers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Right, item S, discuss and take possible action on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
So in your packet, I have the changes that have been made to the budget since the proposed budget was presented. Um, I mentioned in the workshop that as I was looking at the police salaries, there was the error where the um salaries were overstated due to a formula having the health insurance in there. So that correction was made because it was in there twice. So consequently, we are dipping into reserves less than anticipated. Public Works Department asked for another ten thousand for minor tools and equipment after value weighting a few things. And the city secretary's position was one of those positions that was not on the pay scale after looking at other department directors. Um, and it would have uh furthered the gap between her position and some of the other department heads. We put her back on the pay scale, which means she would be getting the adjustment with the majority of the directors, which was the fifteen percent adjustment versus the upper management of nine percent. Um, so with that being said, we are dipping into reserves less than anticipated only to the tune of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, which still puts us um quite a bit beyond our six-month reserve requirement in the general fund. Um, actually more than what, what it was before of about two point three million. So. And we can make changes on September eighth to these other entities, right? And we can make changes on September eighth to these other entities right then. You would just you can change anything in the budget and you can make a move, you know, motion to change X, Y, Z in the budget and that will be done in your final vote and then we'll come out in the final budget with those change numbers.
Darla, do you anticipate any other changes between now and then? I mean, I.
Well, the, I'm sorry, I didn't mention the contract that you just approved for the parking lot. Um, we will need to add that under hotel motel special.
Okay, but that's not gonna change.
No, that won't change anything for the tax rate or anything. And even if you decided to, we don't wanna issue the tax anticipation notes, that's not gonna change your general fund at all. Um, cuz that is completely under the debt fund and that portion of your tax is going to pay the debt for that. Um. Bond issue.
So, so any additional, any changes to those um monies that we may or may not give to those organizations won't change either cuz that's coming out of hotel motel.
Correct. The only, the only um changes I know of are in hotel motel special.
Come in.
Sorry, I've got, I don't have a way to mute my Zoom right now and I have people in the room. There, I can mute now.
Okay. So should we take action to approve this budget as amended and then obviously we would take action or can we leave it alone and approve it all? Next time.
Yes.
Okay.
Approve it all next time, just if you wanna give any direction for any changes in any portion of the budget, you can do that now, but there is no vote right now.
Okay, okay, still waiting, alright. Anybody else have any questions in that regard? Okay. Okay. And I think we're gonna move on and go into closed executive session and then come back with final staff reports. Seven thirty. Yes, I'm sorry. So we're gonna go into closed executive session under section.